Okay, I'll call on our acting CAO to bring us up to date on the addendum for the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'd like to advise of the, any additions or corrections to the agenda, to today's agenda. And item seven A, which is on page two A of your agenda, the BIA Board of Management Minutes says May 17th. That should say March 17th. And item eight, which is on page three A, it, we are adding to the recommendation, an OLT, or the Operational Leadership Team Recommendation, and that is a referral to staff. Item 15, which is your outstanding list, and that's on page 58. The New Market Theatre item should not be bolded, as it's not on today's agenda. It should reference May 25th, so that will come back to you at your next meeting. And as far as additions, we have Ms. Charlene Mike to address the Committee on Upper Canada Run to Support Easter Seals. Item 19 is Mr. Ian Proudfoot, who is here today to address you on the New Market Celebrates the Arts. Item 20 is Mr. John Blumstein to address the Committee regarding item nine, which is the Amberly Gavel Report. Item 21, Ms. Lori Smith, who would like to talk to you about the storage of rec vehicles, which is item 10. And then there are six pieces of correspondence to be added to the agenda for this evening's public hearing on 17844 Leslie Street. And they are from Ms. Leanne Cryley, Mr. Kevin Clare, Ms. Ruth Rutledge, and we have Mr. Magnifico, Mr. Schmidt, and Ms. Corliss. And those will be on your agenda for this evening. And there is no closed session for this afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good. Thank you. Turn down my BlackBerry. Okay, I'll call today's committee the whole meeting to order. Members of committee, we do have an addendum. If I have a motion, please, to add the addendum items to the agenda. Counselor Bezance, Counselor Broom Plumlee, all those in favor. That is carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Being none, then we'll go forward with the first of two presentations. The first one is Amber Chart, and she's going to outline the Town of Newmarket's website and our economic development website. So Amber, if we could...
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'd also just like to introduce Will Ray from our IT department and Jamie Boyle from our customer service department. We are very pleased to be before you today to present a sneak peek of the brand-new Town of Newmarket website and economic development sub-site. Before we get to the good stuff, just wanted to provide a few background details. The website project was a Northern Six Initiative, with three of our N6 partners opting to participate in this project. Newmarket has worked very closely with the Town of Witcher, Stovall, and Aurora to lead the request for proposal and technical launch of the new websites for all three municipalities. We're pleased to say that this has resulted in significant cost savings and greater efficiencies for both us and our neighbors. With Aurora and Witcher-Stovall having launched already, the Town of Newmarket will be ready to launch our new site in the coming weeks. Just to provide a very brief overview of some of the new and enhanced features, our website will be offering a bold new and graphic homepage that will include easily accessible links to the town's social media, public engagement, news and notices, and also our most frequently accessed services. With close to 40% of the town's website users currently accessing the site via mobile, a responsive design will accommodate desktop, laptops, as well as tablets and mobile devices. The new site will also be compliant with all accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act requirements for web. We will offer a powerful Google search function, streamlined navigation and content structure. And just to point out that we did have significant public feedback in putting together the site map previously through focus groups, a workshop, and a survey in which over 100 participants provided their feedback. And throughout the process, we've also worked closely with our Economic Development Officer, Chris Calio, recognizing the need for a new and separate economic development website that will allow for a more targeted and customized approach when it comes to potential business owners and investors. So without further ado, Jamie is just going to do a very brief demonstration of the new homepage.
Thank you, Amber. Mr. Mayor, council. I wanted to bring to attention some of the new things that we have with our new website. One of the biggest features going forward that we did with our website, one of the things we heard the most from feedback was the searchability of our website. So as you can see, right foremost, we have a Google-based search engine. Simply typing in anything, we'll use garbage, for example. There we go. It will take us directly to a number of different areas of garbage, obviously garbage being the key word. Makes it a lot easier for folks to find out exactly what it is they need right away from the very beginning. Going across, we have different levels of navigation. Through our feedback groups, we came up with four different subsections. Within each, you're able to find a number of the different areas of the website that you're looking for, things to do, business, town government, and the like. Going through from... Sorry about that. Number of the different subsections that we have, one of the areas in which we also heard a lot about was how can we actually easily contact the town. Now, from a customer service perspective, one of the things that we're looking forward to is the ability, on this page here in front of us, for members of council like yourself or the public to be able to actually send notifications or information to customer service. This can be done right on the front page through Contact Us. You simply place in your email address, subject, and the subject or the question inquiry, or the issue in question. When you send that email, it actually will come through to customer service, will be answered by customer service, and then followed up from whichever email address was provided to us. So that is one of the things that we highly encourage that will be used going forward. And this is just another avenue in which the members of the public and council like yourself will be able to contact and get issues looked into. Sign up for news. This is simply the ability for us to sign up for e-newsletters, publications, and other publications that we'll have going forward. The Downtown Dash and Newmarket Now are just two examples right now. Attend an event. Our town-sponsored events, special events that we have, as well as committee and council events. Simply pressing on the day in question, if it has a blue marker on it, you can simply click on the day and find out what is exactly happening on that day, with information being provided to you. Quick maps. We'll be able to feature specific maps, whichever ones we decide to put in. If there's something, our trail maps, our parks, recreation, number of different things to be able to utilize. Recreation, we'll point to our recreation pages. Now, as a point of interest, when we do take a look at some of the top navigation pages, the top hits that we get on our website, garbage, finding a job, and recreation are the three largest areas that we get areas for. So of course, recreation in this case, we wanted to have them front and center in your ability to find schedules, times, fees, number of different things like that. Job opportunities, like I said, is another one that we get a lot of hits on. And get involved. Get involved is the ability for members of the public to actually partake in public sessions, online surveys, feedback, public engagement, number of different things like that. And one of the things that I'm particularly excited about is the I'd Like To feature. This will give members of the public quick and easy access to register for any number of things right off the front page, pay for, find out about different things around town, report an issue. Right now, we have one in there. There will be more that are coming in for later. You can apply for your marriage license, your pet tag, all that, all done from the very first page without having to go search for it, as well as some of the main A to Z services that are provided by the town. So one of the things that Amber had talked about was a responsive design that was almost 40% of the people that are accessing our webpage are doing so from a mobile device, either tablet or a smartphone. And what that is, let's try and get a middle page here. Which one would be good?
Town Government's a good one.
Town Government? Okay.
If you just click on the tab itself.
So just to give you an example, if you were reading this from a tablet, you can see the image up on top with picture of Town Hall there. That can be seen by your PC, that can be seen by your tablet. From a smaller smart device, you wouldn't actually be able to see that. So as I move the screen, or as the screen or the resolution changes, depending on the device you're using, so will the screen adapt itself. So it's one of the features that will make it easier to access and make it easier to be able to read from our webpage. Going back.
I think if we just go to the economic development. So we just also wanted to give the opportunity to have a very quick preview of the economic development website. So as you can see, it does actually have a separate look and feel from the town site, recognizing that that's a very targeted audience. And just as we're wrapping up, we wanted to provide the opportunity to also show a sneak peek of a video that will be accessible from the homepage of the economic development website. And that will really give you sort of an indication of the direction that we're going with our economic development efforts. We might have to access that separately. Sorry, there's a technical difficulty here. If you go to Mayor's Office. 2015 Chamber. There you go. Okay, so just to review the next steps, within the next couple of weeks, the site will be ready for soft launch. And during the soft launch phase, we're going to open the site up to all staff to review, as well as reach out to some of our community stakeholders and partners, and our residents, of course, to test out the site and provide some additional feedback. And once we've had the opportunity to garner that feedback, we'll make any necessary modifications, and then we'll be proceeding with the external launch of the site in early June. So that wraps up the sneak peek, and we're certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I do have Counselor Vay, and then Counselor Spungah. Counselor Vay.
Thank you very much. One, congratulations. It's most impressive. I'm looking forward to the launch right away. I can see it functions much better than our previous website. And as everyone knows, websites evolve every few years. And I'm glad to see you've done such a good job in providing something so useful for our residents and their staff. I do have a question, though. When I look at this, we have things to do and attend an event. Are we planning to also include third-party events? We have so many great third-party events here. You went through it quickly, so I didn't see it, and I also know it's incomplete. But are you planning to also do third-party events and having a process for different groups in the town to list their event on our website?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vay. Great question. And we are sort of just working through the process. As you mentioned, our current website, we don't have the ability. But certainly going forward, we're just trying to finalize the process for also including community events on the calendar. And we'll just be looking at ways to identify what are town events versus community events and official council meetings. But yes, absolutely, the intention is to include those events as well.
Thank you. Looking forward to that.
Thank you. Counselor Spungah.
Yeah, this is fabulous. It's a great improvement from our last version. Really good work, and kudos to all involved. Thank you, guys. Question on the, there was an option there somewhere, oh, I'd Like To, and Pay. When, am I able to pay online? And the other thing, I see there, there's bid opportunities, theater tickets. But am I also able to pay for, for example, my dog license? Or now that the license actually is mailed to us, you don't actually pick up your license at the kiosk. Are you able to pay for a lot of the municipal services, programming, et cetera, online? And would you be able, one of my favorite sites that I sign into all the time is Parks Ontario. And one of the wonderful things I'm able to do there is review, you know, for a couple of years back, areas that, for example, I don't know, I stayed, I camped at a certain spot, or I purchased certain camping services, or whatever it might be, from Parks Ontario. Would I be able to do that, so that I could just go online, pay for my services of the municipality through the website?
Amber?
Do you have, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Spungah? We will, as we start to grow with the website, currently it does show just the two. We'd like to certainly move that up towards things like, not just parking tickets, being able to pay for things like garbage tags, large item stickers, things like that, that you can come in to do. You can also do them there. And like Counselor Vay said, it tends to evolve as we grow. If we can build it up to more things and be able to offer those services, paying taxes is one that we've heard of as well. We're not there just yet, but it is something that we are aspiring to do, and will continue to grow with this website.
So I look forward one day to be able to sign into this website, have my account, show my taxes, you know, show what park permits and et cetera I purchased. I think that'd be a great service if we can provide it in the future to the residents. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Broom Plumlee.
Thank you. Would you mind just demonstrating how the accessibility feature works?
How the feature works?
Yeah, how, like, what does it do? Does it include languages as well, or?
Oh, sorry. Is it up?
Is that just not available yet? Maybe can you just, to just fit it needed, the double A requirements?
Go ahead, Broom.
The accessibility, that's a piece of content that describes the features on the site, but it's not up yet.
Okay.
Some of the things that will be included is... Some of the things that will be included is the Drive's allowed plug-in that we currently have on the website, I don't know if you've seen it, it's a screen reader. And also, there will be the ability to increase the size of text and decrease the size of text directly on the website.
Okay, great. Will it have the option to convert into different languages in the future, or?
We spoke about that, I can't remember.
I don't, I don't think we're quite there yet with languages, but definitely something that we're looking into. I was just going to add one thing on the accessibility piece of it as well. All of our web users have been trained in posting to ensure the accessibility, so we are meeting all of our, we're actually the level above where we need to be when it comes to the web standards, but all of our users are ensuring that when we post the pieces of content, we're labeling all of the links correctly and all of the images are all tagged appropriately. So, all of those pieces of the puzzle are very important to ensure that it will function properly for screen readers, so just to add that.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much. It's really exciting to see, finally, that we're getting these updates coming forward. And I'm always particularly interested in the ease of being able to find reports and policy documents, because obviously, one of our objectives and accountabilities is to be as transparent as possible and also to facilitate the public or anybody being able to find documents in an easy way, and currently, it can be quite complex. Having said that, Mr. Mayor, I'm interested in the searchability through Google. So, will we be able to now do keywords and actually get to documents and policies in an easy way through this? Or do you still need to kind of know which department it is and then, you know, move around in there for a bit and then try different things out before you can find it? Because right now, it is, it is complex to be able to easily access documents and policy statements and so forth.
Amber?
I'm going to answer part of that, and then I think Will is going to answer the other part from the Google searchability and more of the IT side of things. But definitely, I think the Counselor's brought up a great point about how our current website is organized, and it's organized more by how we think internally, rather than how our residents and external people think about our services. So, where now you have to dig down into departmental information to find, you know, a key piece of information that you might be looking for. Just as an example, you have to go to the finance department to find information about budgets and finances, whereas now, under Town Government, budgets and finances is part of that drop-down navigation. So, from the navigation side of things, we've really tried to look at that, and then Will can just add from the actual searchability from a Google point of view.
One of the nice things about using Google as opposed to the system that we're using now is that it does have keyword search, and it works exactly the same as the real Google does. Some of the things, the challenges that we've had in the past were that some of the PDF documents were scanned in, and there wasn't optical character recognition on that. But I believe that that's been partially resolved, and so all PDFs and all reports and all things like that will be indexed the same as the webpage. So, it should, it should be much better in terms of like keyword key information.
So, I won't always need to kind of figure out to go to somewhere else and then drop down, drop down, drop down, but I could go to the key, what are you looking for, type in budget 2015, and then I'll have all of the documents related to that come up?
The only small caveat on that is that a lot of the council documents are stored in a different system that aren't, that isn't part of this particular search engine, that you would need to go to the Zira Pub site and search there, and you'll be able to get the information that you're looking for. Just one extra step for those particular documents. So, for instance, if you're looking for council minutes that has budget 2014 in it, it won't necessarily be included on this search engine, it would be included in the system that we store those documents in.
But Will, because they're all public documents, so?
Yeah, it's just, they're, it's all available to the public, it's just because this index is on this server, the one that we host and manage, and the council minutes and agendas and such are on another system that we outsourced. They aren't, the indexes aren't merged together, that's all.
Is that something that we could look forward to in the future? Because I think, you know, the more that we can put together one robust place where people can find things, the better.
Yeah. Yeah, I think definitely, we're just, some of the information that we currently deal with third-party vendors for on the website, we're just working through how we can make that information as accessible as possible on the site. So, absolutely, we're going back and having these conversations, and our goal is certainly to make all of that information as searchable and as accessible as possible.
That's, that's good feedback in terms of, this is a work in progress, and how long will we be doing the soft launch, Amber?
We're looking at three to four weeks for the soft launch phase, just enough time to give us the opportunity to garner some additional feedback and have the chance to implement that. So, certainly, any feedback that we get, we'll continue to have these conversations.
And I think it would be helpful to have the information sourced as easily as possible. Regional Counselor?
Thanks. I guess what I'm wondering about is, and I don't know the latest in website trends or best practices, but I'm just thinking about when we highlight, when we sometimes will say, we'll highlight, oh, that Glenway, you know, report and map of, you know, from a third-party, perhaps, will be posted on the website, or, you know, the latest, you know, listing on, it's something that we're trying to highlight that we've mentioned in a recent meeting. Did you explore the idea of trying to find a way to have the sort of the more recent topics or things that we want, or even things that we just want to highlight ourselves? How do we put them in a more prominent place on the web?
Yep, no, I think that's an excellent question, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the regional counselor. Right now, we're just still in the process of populating the content, so you'll see this latest news banner, that, when we launch, will have content in it, so that would be an excellent place to have, you know, any of the latest and sort of most breaking news.
Are they hyperlinked as well, or no?
Yeah, that would be clickable, so that would take you then to a page that would have a number of links, you know, it could be five, or well, I don't even think there's a limit to the capacity of information that we can put there. But I think that also brings up a good point in that, in the case of an emergency, we do have the option, basically, when, if, you know, we'd have to just determine what sort of level that we see to be fit to sort of overtake the entire homepage, but it certainly is an option. When you click on the site, a box could come up over the entire site. So, if it was an extreme heat warning, or like I say, if we were getting more bordering on emergency mode, we definitely have that capability. If it was, you know, latest breaking news, that was more of what we would see as being daily routine, then it would be added under that latest news function.
And that's, that's where you, because I'm thinking like, almost like a hot topics pulldown, where you could have, you know, Glenway, or feedback on recreation playbook, or any one of things, so you didn't necessarily have to search it and possibly get the search words right, it would just automatically pull those very topical five or 10 items that we always have that are changing and shifting.
Yes, we do have a hot topics section, or the intention is to have a hot topic section. It isn't currently linked from the homepage, but we can definitely look at how we could potentially have that be a little bit more accessible right off the homepage, rather than having to get into the interior navigation structure.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Counselor Kerwin.
Well, I just want to compliment you, it's user-friendly, it's, for a person like me, it's very simple. And I apologize for the shades, my eyes are still very sensitive to light. When I had the opportunity to visit Boca Raton and West Palm Beach, I attended a seminar on fraud, and it was given by a detective of the former Miami Police Squad. And I hope we do this, that when we move into online payment, it's one of the great fraud areas, where professional hackers tap into your bank account, and you show up at the bank and your money is gone. And that's a very affluent area of Florida, that West Palm Beach, Palm Beach, so forth, Fort Myers, Boca Raton. And he asked how many people had been hit by fraud of that nature, and almost everyone put their hand up. So, when you move into it, it's something you have to be very, very careful of when you go to online payment, both as a person participating in it and the receiver. That's what we don't need, is lawsuits by people whose money didn't show up in the town coffers. So, thank you very much. It's, you're moving into a different era, and it's very simple, and as you say, garbage is one of the things that's prominent, you just type it in and you have all your answers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Amber, it's very apparent that you put an awful lot of time and effort and talent into this, and I want to thank you for that. What's really important is that we still have enough time to provide some additional input, some of the input that we've had here, I think, has been helpful. And I'd encourage anyone who's watching the streaming to take a look at the site and give us some feedback, make sure that it's focused on the user needs as much as our administrative requirements, but the user of the site will give us the best input. I can't remember what the saying is, it's he who rides the saddle can best tell you where it pinches. So, getting that kind of feedback is good feedback, so I'd encourage everybody to take some time to try the site on and see if it meets your needs. But thank you.
Doesn't launch.
When it is launched?
Yeah, we're probably looking at about six weeks for the external launch, but just for anybody who might be watching at home, we'll be advertising within the next two to three weeks for opportunities to participate in some sessions, to get involved and give us their feedback on the website pre-launch.
Good, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate this presentation. Motion to receive the presentation. Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Veig, call those in favor, and that is carried. Thank you, thank you very much. Next presentation then is Mr. Ian Proudfoot, it's item number 19 on our agenda. It relates to our New Market Celebrates the Arts and the outcome of our transition team, and there's a PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Proudfoot?
Maybe as you're getting, as you're getting settled in for the benefit of our newer members of council, New Market Celebrates the Arts was the brand of a gala that we've put together, I think about six years ago, and it was with the outstanding support of Ian and the York Region Media Group that we were able to have six very successful galas, and it was done on an ad hoc basis. The good news was, is that the committee decided that there might be a better way to do this. So, what happened is, is that those of us that were involved in the presentation sat through an informal facilitated session, and that led to the understanding that we should have a transition team to develop the concept and to develop the way that we should be taking New Market Celebrates the Arts. And that's what this presentation is about, what are the next steps and how can we go forward with that? So, Ian, I'm looking forward to your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's a privilege to be here. I know a number of you have been at New Market Celebrates the Arts, and I'm sure that you would agree, it's been a wonderful event. But looking at the transition team, and I'll speak to that in a second, we also had reached a point where it's time to try and move on to the original vision that we had, because we had never been able to fulfill that, so. Let's see how this presentation is going to scroll down. There we go. So, as I said, we've had a wonderful event at Pickering College over the years, a great facility to hold it in, keeps us connected to our community, and we've had great success featuring many, many artists and some wonderful talent over the years performing. And if you believe, as I do, that food is part of a great cultural experience, food has been wonderful as well. Give you a little background, we're now in our seventh year, the event has raised $193,400 through a separate group that decides who will receive grants. We have handed out $186,455, that represents 74 different local artists and event organizers being funded through this. And as we like to say, that it's touched a lot of lives and it's made a priceless difference, We were asked to put together by the mayor and the regional counselor, a transition team. I was asked to chair that, which I was pleased to do so. Transition team included Jackie Plater, Peter Stirrup, Dave Peters, Pat Noble, Lindsay Burwash, Rick Curry, and Colin Service. I suspect you know each and every one of these people, and I don't think I need to expand on each's commitment to New Market or their commitment to the arts in this community. We discussed transitioning the brand from a one-night event, which it had been to a year-long celebration, and would point out to you that the concept supports key recommendations within the cultural master plan around celebration and promotion of the arts, and it also fits that it is a key strategic priority of council. So, what is our vision? So, we talk about New Market Celebrates the Arts brand unites passionate community members in promoting and celebrating the arts. Our objectives include to leverage the brand of New Market Celebrates the Arts, and if you're wondering what we might be referring to, this is the brand, right here. Creating greater value for sponsors while supporting the cultural master plan. A provision of grants to community events and individual artists, creating awareness and promotion of opportunities to participate in and/or enjoy the arts in a year-long celebration. New Market Celebrates the Arts Board, so we will form a new board to achieve this vision for the future. The New Market Celebrates the Arts Board will be a volunteer board, supported by town staff. There will be three committees of the board, as outlined below, and each committee will serve to advance the vision and mission of the board. So, there would be a director of grants committee, director of fundraising and sponsorship, director of marketing committee, two directors at large, chair of the New Market Arts Council, and then town staff as designated. Role of the chair would be to serve as the primary face of the board, set the agendas for all board meetings, chair all meetings of the board, ensure all directors are performing their respective functions. Grants committee, and we currently do have one, would review, evaluate, and disperse grants for the development of New Market artists and New Market groups, organizations pursuing arts initiatives and events, and would actively engage the artistic community in applying for grants. Fundraising and sponsorship, responsible for the planning, preparation, and execution of fundraising events, including the signature event, New Market Celebrates the Arts Gala. The sponsorship portion of the committee will collaborate with other town departments, such as the Mayor's Office and Recreation and Culture Department, to assist with identifying potential sponsors and to assist in contacting the sponsors. As well, this committee will actively foster a positive relationship with sponsors, ensuring generosity is well-recognized and acknowledged. The marketing committee, monitor and prove use of the New Market Celebrates the Art brand, develop promotional and collateral material, coordinate communications on behalf of NCAB in consultation with the town of New Market, and then work with grant recipients to develop promotional campaigns. The role of town staff, ensures all issues concerning the town of New Market are considered and addressed appropriately. Actively participates in the direction the board is taking as a voting member of the board. Ensure that if the board is moving in a direction contrary to the interests of the town, appropriate steps are taken to correct that direction, and provide support to the various committees as needed. The following outline what council is considering today. Support for the vision of New Market Celebrates the Arts. Appointment process to the New Market Celebrates the Arts Board. Branding appropriate town events as New Market Celebrates the Arts events. An approval for staff to support the New Market Celebrates the Arts Board. I want you to picture for a second that you're out attending an event, whether it be on the weekend or during the week, could be the Jazz Festival, Caribbean Festival, it could be anything, New Market Theater, whatever that event might be. that event might be. And that event has been given permission by the board to use this logo, indicating that it is a New Market Celebrates the Arts event. Those could be town events, they could be volunteer events, third party. It would bring recognition, greater support, and a much higher awareness of how much in New Market currently there is taking place with the arts. But it is a group that needs leadership, it needs support, and it needs your activism to make this happen today. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or clarification from any of the members? Well, it's a sign of a great presentation and well-thought-out program. There's no questions. It might be appropriate then to receive this presentation, and I'd like to entertain a motion that would approve the recommendations in principle and refer this to staff in order that staff could develop the mandate and the work plans, and also to endorse these principles that are being put forward. Okay, thank you. Counselor Kirwin, seconded by Counselor vague. Any further discussion? All those in favor then? Unanimous? Thank you very much, Ian.
Thank you.
A lot of hard work has gone into this. We've seen some of the earlier stages, and it's taken New Market Celebrates the Arts to the next level. And I'm excited about what is possible. So we'll have a lot more staff engagement in the process. And I understand, Colin, that this will all fit within our existing mandate, and that's really important for us as well. Good. Thank you. Our next item is a deputation from Charlene Mike, and Charlene is here on behalf of the Easter Seals Society. Thank you very much to the committee and the transition team. Charlene? We allow up to five minutes for deputations?
I don't think that long. First of all, I'm not putting on a screen show. I just wanted to thank the community of New Market for their support for Easter Seals for the last 40 years. The New Market Percichini Run's been going on for 40 years, and it's coming back to New Market on May 24th. One of my reasons today is to thank the mayor. I know that you've been a participant in our run in the past, and I'm looking today to commend Joe Percichini, that asked me to commend. He's been a longtime supporter of the run and a longtime supporter of New Market. And this year, we seem to be falling a bit behind on some of our runners and our time. And I'm noticing by your website that the third-party events that you had mentioned probably would have helped me about two or three months ago. But we're looking for some strong support this year, if we can get it. And we want to pass on that we're hoping that some of the council members or some of the community can get behind us and support this. We've got a lot of kids in Simcoe County that we look after, and we're coming down to York. We've got over 400 kids in York County that we look after, and we're really starting to hurt for some funds in this community. So we need some help. So that's all I'm here today is to ask for some help and some people to come and walk and run for us.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Kirwin?
I wish to thank you for coming, and this will be my 40th year. I have never missed one.
Thank you.
Even though I was away a couple of times with the late Larry Blight and Joe Sponger, we carried the banner for you out in Edmonton.
Thank you.
That's the one time I was away, and I'll be down there again this year, and anything I can do to support it. But I noticed Joe Percichini is still on board and still supporting you. And when we started, just to give you a heads-up, there were 30 of us who started, and it started with Joe Percichini. We ran from New Market to Bradford and back again, and one year we even had a bear.
You know what the sad thing is, is you probably made more money with the 30 people years ago than I'm making with 500 people. That's the sad thing. I mean, years ago, things had changed. It's a real strong community event 40 years ago. You guys are making about $60,000 or $70,000 and $200,000 by yourself.
Yeah.
We have a committee of only five, and yet we've got 500, 600 runners and walkers, and we're lucky to make $100,000. And our expenses are far greater than that. With looking after the kids and the families in this community, we're far more than $100,000.
Well, we'll do everything possible. I know this council will, and our mayor will, and I know Percichini will, and we'll be out there.
Thank you very much.
But I think that first year, we raised about, I don't know, $3,000. It was a small group, maybe it was 7,200, I'm not sure of that figure. But it was exciting, and it just took off. And as you're right, some years, we raised a quarter of a million dollars. And it was all volunteers. There was no one paid. Thank you so much for continuing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bazanz?
Thank you. Could you just repeat for us the date and also the route where it's going? Because I think that it's back at Upper Canada Mall. It was at Ferry Lake.
It's still at Ferry Lake.
Oh, it's still at Ferry Lake.
Still at Ferry Lake.
This is Upper Canada Mall here, so...
Yeah, River Walk Commons is where it goes to. I'm not from here. This is, you know, you were talking about volunteers. I am the only Easter Seal staff from Highway 7 all the way to Huntsville, looking after Wasaga Beach, Collingwood, and Partagay Bruce. Easter Seals' money goes to our kids, not staff. So tonight is my first time to walk through. I wish I had sponsors, but tonight I'm actually walking the route. I've never done it. So it is at River Commons this year. The same place as it was last year.
Okay. And what the date is?
May 24th.
May 24th.
Sunday.
So Upper Canada Mall is one of the sponsors?
They're one of the sponsors of the mall. Actually, we've got a midway going on there this weekend to help us raise funds for it as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you. So, May 24th. Counselor Kirwin, I challenge you.
Make it, what, 46 years in, David?
No, 40 years.
Thank you. Counselor Sponger?
Yeah, I would hate for you to have a hard time putting this together, because I know that so many members of council in the past have worked, and so many volunteers in town have worked so hard to make this a success. So I am not going to take the challenge with the two other councillors, because I would have to check my schedule. It's pretty busy this time of year. But one thing I could offer you, if you would like to raise some awareness and maybe get some sponsors. I see the treasurer, and I think vice president of the New Market Farmers Market is in the audience. She's that lovely lady with the green dress there. Maybe you can talk to her, she can let you have a boost there, leading up to May 24th to raise some awareness.
There's some great opportunities as well, if you're able to put together a tweet or a Facebook page. I know that members of council here are quite happy to share community events through some of their social media. So if you have something there, even if you could send us the links through email...
Yes, I will.
Then we'd be more than happy to do that. So, yeah, it's been a long time. I think I had well over 30 years in trying to catch up to David. And what is happening is that it used to be that the Percichini Easter Seal Run Walkathon was the only event in the municipality.
Yes.
And it's been such a good idea that it's been a challenge, and others have taken it on. So it does create some increased competition. The Upper Canada Mall, having them support, I think, is a fabulous idea. They've been great community sponsors. And maybe if you speak with them on their social media as well, they can help promote the event as well.
I'm going there from here, actually, and all of your ideas are very appreciated. Thank you very much. And thank you very much for holding our Easter Seal kids close to your hearts. I know yous all do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin?
If you can leave, you know, if you can leave some hard copies of pledges, I would greatly appreciate that, because I'll give them out for you.
Thank you.
And get people to get their pledges in early. We have about three weeks to get those pledges, but they need hard copies.
Okay.
You know, everything's done online and so forth, but some people don't have access to that.
Okay.
Some of the old guard that comes out, they just need those pledges nailed gold, and they'll raise money for you.
I'll come back tomorrow with some more hard copies.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to receive this presentation, deputation. Counselor Kirwin? Counselor Broom Plumley? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item is the determination of consent items. The consent items listed on our agenda are items 2 to 15 and items 18 to 24. Are there any items that members of council wish to deal with separately? Now, I will say that we do have a deputation request for item number nine, item number 10, and item number 14. So we have deputation requests, so we'll deal with those separately. Are there any other items that members of council wish to deal with separately? Counselor Bazanz?
Item number 12.
Item number 12. Okay.
And item number 13.
And item number 13. Okay. Good. Any other items? Okay, Mr. Clerk, what does that leave us with? Could I have a motion then to adopt all items with the exception of items numbered?
Nine, 10, 12, 13, and 14.
Okay. Can I have a motion of that effect? Counselor Bazanz? Counselor Hampton? All those in favor? Okay. That is carried. So we'll start with item number nine. Item number nine is the Amberly Gavel report regarding closed sessions, meetings of council, and we do have a deputation request for Mr. Blumenthal. Now, we permit up to five minutes?
A couple of comments to make about the Amberly Gavel report, and a couple of just comments about, first of all, the process, and then comments about the report itself. The slides that I'm putting up are actually taken from either the report or from the bylaw, the procedure bylaw. This one is taken from the Government of Ontario website. With regards to the process, I requested the December 10th report on December 17th. It's now May that it's coming before council. I don't know why such a delay. The reason I'm bringing this up is the report, because I'm concerned that with the new code of conduct rules where you've got to make a complaint within six months, I think five months for a report to come back is a little long, you know, in terms of that. And certainly, someone should be looking into making sure that the process moved along with Amberly Gavel and didn't get held up unnecessarily. In the past, we've talked about closed-door meetings quite a bit, and, you know, there's a reason to do closed-door meetings. They protect the public in case of lawsuits, land purchases, labor negotiations, and the like. And the municipal act does outline why a closed-door meeting would be allowed. What I'm concerned with, though, is cracks that's appearing within the process. I think the procedures are sort of the procedure bylaw deals with a lot of these issues. I just want to make sure that council's being rigorous in terms of maintaining those things. So this comes from the report on December 10th, and the excerpt just highlights the one issue that I take with this. There seems to have been no real reason to go in camera on this particular item. Earlier this year, the Ontario Ombudsman came to York Region, and he spoke at length about closed-door meetings. And in addition to members of the public attending this event, there was councillors from East Wilinberry Aurora, Vaughan, Markham, Richmond Hill, they're all in attendance for this. And he really did speak on the issue of training and education. And his gist of it was, training and education is learning a new skill, like learning how to use the voting record, vote-recording system, for example. It's not meant to have informal conversations about, you know, where the town's heading. Those are much better done in the open, in an open workshop of council where no decisions are made, they're just, you know, led through a process. If you've read the report, you know, there are some issues in terms of the timing of going in camera. You know, it's not really meant to lock the public out because they're going for lunch, nor is it meant to, you know, there's really no reason not to have the public or the media tag along if anyone wanted to. And I, from what I understand from the report, nobody asked to either. So it wasn't like there was a whole lot of demand for it. January 26th is a little bit more concerning. Was the law actually broken? No. But I think that council judged itself more than, you know, by the conduct of, did we break any laws today? Because, you know, you've promised best practices, you try to achieve for best practices, and that certainly wasn't achieved in the January 26th meeting. I'm hoping that, you know, you'll take the comments that were made in the report to heart and look at how to achieve more openness and more transparency at council. The closed-door meeting investigator was quite critical of the fact that council voted on two substantive resolutions during this meeting. And, you know, where he was saying that the more the process should be more about directions to staff, you know, and that type of thing. The town bylaw, as I mentioned before, already deals with this issue. It says, you know, that any required vote will occur after or following the closed session, not during the closed session. So that's something I really wanted to highlight for you. You do have the procedures in place to meet best practices, and had you followed that, there'd be no need for any of the recommendations that came up within the closed-door meeting investigator's report. But these are good recommendations, and in fact, you know, I'm almost going to suggest you take them and keep them beside you when you're at the table here in a closed-door session, to make sure that you're complying with these best practices, that votes happen after or following the closed session, not before, that the discussion gets summarized in the way that it's supposed to be summarized after the fact, and that there's nothing substantive done within closed sessions, that the only thing that you do in closed session is the give directions to staff and that kind of thing. So that was the summary of the meeting investigator. I did want to come to speak today to highlight those three recommendations, because I think they're good, and I hope that you'll take them to heart and that, you know, that we'll learn from this process. That's it.
Thank you. Well, you've timed that well. Five clicks around the button. And I believe that the recommendations are to adopt the recommendations of the Amberly Gavel report. Are there any questions or clarification from members of council? Could I have a motion then to receive the deputation? Counselor Twinni? Counselor Bazanz? All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. It's a good time for us then to go to item number nine of our agenda. The recommendations are before you, and that we adopt the best-practice recommendations outlined by the Amberly Gavel Closed Meetings Report. Could I have a motion with respect to those recommendations? Counselor Twinni? Counselor vague? Any discussion? I think it's a good report. It's helpful, and we're in a continuing process of best practices. And so I think that this type of information is helpful for council and helps us get better. And that's what the intent is. Regional councillor?
Thanks very much. Just, we had some excerpts shared with us previously. I thought there were some other excerpts from this report that were important to share with the public as well. One is on page 25 that says, "Hence, we have found that council was not in breach of the municipal act by being in closed session during this portion of the workshop." And that was the concern that was brought forward in the call for an investigation, and it was found that's not the case. On 26, it states, "We are not concluding that these two resolutions were illegal votes under the municipal act. Rather, we're cautioning council to craft all resolutions as directions to staff." These are warnings. I think that the important part on page 26, of course, is the conclusion that states Amberly Gavel has concluded that council did not breach the open meetings requirement of the municipal act in closing its workshop to the public on December 10th, 2014, in order to travel by bus to strategic sites. We have also concluded that council did not breach the open meeting requirements of the municipal act in closing its special committee, the whole meeting, to the public on January 26th, 2015. We have, however, cautioned council about making what appear by their wording to be substantive decisions in closed session rather than directions to staff or other officers. And I think it's fair to say, everybody around this table is aware of this, everybody at council tables around Ontario, that there's been a substantive shift over the last couple of years to moving towards direction only, and that's what's required. And everybody is, you know, complying with that. Occasionally, I think the wording slips, and it's slightly different. But the point is, the conclusion was very, very clear, that there was no breaches of any nature, and the requested investigation, and we've seen a lot of investigations, it seems, but the requested investigation, of course, does cost taxpayer dollars. I'm glad it found that were no breaches. I was confident it would find that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good. And for the benefit of anyone who's watching us streaming, the report that... Good, and for the benefit of anyone who's watching us streaming, the report that we're referencing is on the committee of the whole minutes. It's item number nine, and it starts on page nineteen. It's good reading, it's great instructions, and it's very helpful. And as I say, it creates a good basis on going forward. Counselor Bezance?
Yes, thank you. And one of the recommendations that I particularly appreciated was the recommendation that when council does resolve to go into closed session, that we actually have the portion of the act applicable to why we are doing that or allowing us to do that to be cited, because I think that will just, again, help remind us all as well as to convey to the public that there is stipulation or provision under the act that allows us to move into closed session, that it's not just something that we kind of think of and decide to do on our own. So that was useful to me as just sort of a, not just a reminder, but just as a piece of diligence.
Good discipline around the process, yeah. That's the word. Okay. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Yes, we did. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item then is item number ten, and that is with respect to the parking and storage of recreational vehicles in residential zones. And we have a deputation request from Lori Smith. Is Lori here? Good. All right. Lori, we permit up to five minutes, if you'd like.
Your worship, council and staff. On January twelfth of this year, I approached council to ask that section 5.8.2 of bylaw two thousand and ten dash forty regarding parking of trailers and recreational vehicles as it pertains to zones R1 and 2 be reviewed with the hope to amend and relax the restrictions to some degree. To start, I'd like to take the time to thank you all for listening to my concerns, and of course, thank you for moving forward on this issue by reviewing the bylaw and having the planning department prepare an extensive report. After reading the report, I have prepared some comments. The report states that it's not possible to satisfy everyone based on the range of opinions on the subject matter. I'm sure council deals with many of these issues where the public is divided relatively evenly, but this doesn't appear to be the case with this topic. According to option four in the report, there have been an average of ninety complaints per year in the town of Newmarket. With a population of around eighty-five thousand, that's roughly one-tenth of a percent of the population who are clearly in opposition to this type of parking. As stated at the January twelfth meeting, we had traveled less than a quarter of Newmarket and witnessed inaccess of two hundred and fifty violations of rule 5.8.2, which equates to a town-wide number in the range of a thousand or more trailers. With the ninety annual complaints, that is fewer than ten percent of all trailers, recreational vehicles, in Newmarket. It's a shame that such a small group of people are, in effect, able to control of who can and cannot park a trailer and recreational vehicle on their property. I believe it is clear that the number of people in favor of private property trailer and recreational vehicles parking far outweigh those in opposition. This is evident in the numbers. Approximately ninety complaints versus approximately a hundred parked trailers and recreational vehicles, this is a ratio of eleven to one in favor. I'd also like to remind you that these trailers and recreational vehicles are provincially licensed, bearing license plates, and can legally be driven or towed and parked on the street. I feel I should also mention that they are insured, either on their own or fall under one's auto insurance. So I ask, why should they not be allowed to be parked on private driveways? I feel there should be no seasonal limits. As stated in option three of the report, only limits of dimensions and the number of trailers and recreational vehicles on driveways. However, if this is an option that the town council will not consider, then a seasonal limitation such as option three at least seems like a viable compromise. Option two, on the other hand, is not a compromise by any means. By changing seventy-two hours to four days, all that is accomplished is a reduction in the bylaw staff's time required to prove a violation. I still do not believe the bylaw department would have the resources or the manpower to enforce this bylaw in a timely fashion should there be an increase in the number of complaints filed within town in relation to the trailers and recreational vehicles parking violations. This could circle back to the question of discrimination. I feel that if we settle with option two, that we will have done little more than waste the time of many, along with town resources. It would be a shame if we didn't follow through with the seasonal option at a minimum. We seem to be moving in the right direction with this bylaw review. Let's keep moving forward and relax the strict rules from another era as they pertain to the parking of trailers and recreational vehicles. I will close by once again saying thank you for listening, and I ask you to please consider my thoughts moving forward.
Thank you. Now, the recommendations in the report is that we go to a public meeting so we get the benefit of the general public's input, which is the normal process when we're looking at a zoning bylaw amendment. I have some questions here for clarification. Counselor Twinney?
It's a motion received, I have a question to staff.
Okay. Are there any questions for clarification on this deputation? And again, we'll have a further discussion after we've had the public meeting. And then if you could leave your comments with us, that would be helpful. Okay? Is there a seconder to receive the deputation? Counselor Hampton? All those in favor? And that carries. Thank you. Counselor Twinney?
We're going to go to a public meeting, and the staff recommendations are to look at options two and three. Are we going to present all four options at the public meeting, or would it only be two and three if that's what you're recommending? Or is it up to us to sort of put a direction there?
Mr. Nethery?
Mr. Mayor, the intent by the recommendation is to really highlight two and three. However, if its councils wish to open it up a little bit more broadly to have some discussion about the other options as well, I think that's fair, and we can easily do that.
Yeah, I think it'd be worthwhile if we're going to have the PIC to have all options out there and so that we have a broader look at the whole picture. I think, I mean, certainly, I, I mean, I don't know what the right answer is, you know, me and what the balance is, and I'm sort of, you know, myself thinking maybe option three is, but I know there's certainly, you know, I mean, there's thoughts out there that to open it up is a consideration as well. So I think it would give an opportunity for feedback on all options before we make a final decision.
Okay. That might modify the recommendations. The recommendations are the, okay. So do you want to make a motion then, Counselor Twinney?
I'd like to make a motion that, okay, so to keep the, actually, maybe make the, keep the recommendations the same, but take out number two and say that all options listed in the report are going to be submitted to the public.
Okay, so your recommendation is amended? Okay. Do we have a seconder for that? Counselor Broomplumley? Okay. Wish to speak to it then? Counselor Twinney?
I just have already, I guess, I just, you know, I could just, it's an opportunity to look at the bylaw as a whole and get feedback looking at different options, including all, including one and four as well.
Okay. Counselor Broomplumley has a seconder? Okay. Regional councillor?
Thanks very much. I've had this discussion before in similar contexts, but I'm just wondering if staff feedback about the PICs, and we use them a lot, we have, I don't know how many a year, a couple of hundred probably, and they're very useful for, certainly for certain works that are going around a street or two, a sidewalk that affects a number of people. Sometimes they're helpful in giving you a type of feedback on a broader issue, but I have to say, if we post a PIC on this issue, my suspicion is we're going to get maybe ten or fifteen people will come out. A few of them will have a particular passion one way or another, and I'm not sure it helps us get a broader sense of how the community feels about this. And yet, this is an issue that could have a broad community impact. Have we explored ways of, and costs related to, and I don't want to drive in order to cost, but is there technology-related methods or other ways we could try to poll across the town a little more and get a general sense of how the community feels without asking to come to a PIC to which they probably won't attend?
Just want to clarify with Mr. Nethery. I think this is a statutory public meeting because it's a zoning bylaw amendment, but you're looking at additional. Is that correct, Mr. Nethery? Is that my understanding correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, you are correct. It is, because it ultimately might see an amendment to the zoning bylaw, we would have to actually have a statutory public meeting. On the point of some alternate way of trying to receive the public's advice, I'm not sure what that might be, but I think we can certainly look at it. I'm almost thinking whether or not our new website might enable some interactive sort of ability to sort of say yea or nay kind of thing. But, Mr. Mayor, we would certainly have to have that statutory public meeting, and perhaps through that process, we could ultimately identify some other mechanism as well to help inform the decision. We would need to prepare a follow-up report and deal with what was heard, certainly at the statutory public meeting. And in the event that there is some other mechanism that we can identify, then we could provide any learnings arising from that within the report as well.
Madam CCL?
Mr. Mayor, just adding to what the director just said, we could investigate different methods. Wanda has advised that an IVR call-out survey can be done relatively inexpensively, so that could be something that we look into if council would like us to do that.
And if I can, through Mr. Mayor, I think it might be interesting, I mean, I know we've done a little bit of work like this around different things, different topics before, but not a lot. And I do think there's going to become a greater need in town to try to get the pulse of the public on some issues, not on all issues. We can't poll the community on everything, but I think on some issues, and this might be an interesting one to pile a little bit, to see what kind of feedback we get, how useful or valid it appears to be or is. But I think there's some where it could be really helpful. I mean, it's very hard for me to know, I mean, I can think of and chat with some people like we often do as councillors, we'll go out and ask some people, what do you think about this, what do you think about that? But, you know, statutory public meeting or PIC usually receives a very small audience and doesn't give you a great read on the broader community. It gives you a read on those who are, you know, sort of more passionate about the topic. And it is an area I'd like to see us exploring in general anyway going forward, is trying to find methods for garnering broader public input on some of the issues.
It's a good opportunity to test the get-involved process that we have through the communications group, so, good, thank you. Counselor Twinney?
Yeah, just to follow up, I do like the idea, I think, just, you know, thinking about the fact that I think we won't get, at a public meeting, we're not going to get the response from people that perhaps have neighbors or live in a neighborhood, that people have a trailer that have it there all year and are not bothered by it. They're not going to come out and make a voice or concern because they're good with it and they're fine with it, but we're not going to hear that feedback unless we do something like of that nature. So it's a good idea, maybe a good way of getting some broader feelings about changing this bylaw.
Thank you. Can we leave that as a direction to staff to explore some options on how we can get more community engagement on the issue in addition to the statutory public meeting? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the recommendations as amended? Thank you. The next deputation that we have is with respect to the patios, and that is number fourteen. I think Anne Martin wishes to do a deputation. Permit up to five minutes. Now, if I could just clarify, Mrs. Martin, as to whether or not you're, I know you're on the board for the BIA, are you representing the BIA at this point, or this is just your views as an individual? Okay, good. All right, thank you. Now, if you could slide over a bit, we could catch you on the microphone a little easier. Okay, so.
There we go. I want to thank Mayor Van Beinen and Regional councillor Taylor and members and staff for providing this opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. This is my personal opinion. I have been a building owner on Main Street for thirty years, and I've become aware that the council has been asked to endorse a pilot project for two outdoor patios on Main Street. And this would be between Water and Mallard. A possible candidate, I understand, for a patio would be Maiden Mexico. Maiden Mexico has a double front on its restaurant, very attractive, very well-attended, and has really been a leader in bringing people down to Main Street, back to Main Street, and set off a whole trend of restaurants and bars and cafes opening, and will be forever grateful to Maiden Mexico for that. The, I believe the space required on the sidewalk would be the entire length of the front of Maiden Mexico, and then because the patio would be constructed and exist on the sidewalk with sides to it because it's a licensed patio, pedestrians heading south on Main Street have to be redirected. So they come down, they're coming down Main Street, and before they even hit Maiden Mexico, they, I believe, this is the Model and Berry which we hear so much about, would be directed on a boardwalk out into the parking spaces in front of Maiden Mexico and proceed, so they've gone through one parking space, now they're going to proceed through two parking spaces, and they're going to need a fourth parking space, I believe, to get them back on the sidewalk and heading south on Main Street again. This, of course, touches on many items. Patios are very popular. Everyone wants to sit on a patio and enjoy the sun and have a cocktail or whatever, a cup of tea, but we cannot spare two or four parking spots per restaurant, and I think this aspect of this project has to be revisited. A possible solution to increase the participation in the patio experience would be, after all, we have eighteen-plus restaurants, cafes, ice cream parlors, bakeries, sushi places, Chinese food on the street. And in a recent conversation with town officials in Berry, they explained to me that their thirty-six encroachment, thirty-six inch encroachment that they had for these places to have sidewalk signs was extended to forty-eight inches, measuring from up against the front wall, allowing two, three, four, or five tables and chairs, depending on the width of the facility, to function. These owners are allowed to display some merchandise, they're not allowed to sell things on the street or advertise the prices, but they can promote their business, they can have a little card on the table or whatever, and it's been a very pleasing and successful venture for the downtown. We look to Berry because they're doing a great job up there. They actually have five thousand parking spaces, two hundred private parking spaces, and the public parking spaces are metered. And that's a great revenue producer, maybe it's something we should be looking at for our Main Street. Berry also made the point that their patios are extended, they're intended to extend the dining hours of five to nine for clients in the restaurants and pubs. They're not there to attract the night crowd, they are intended to extend the dinner hour, which I thought was a good point. On the subject of patio hours and the sound amplification, which is a concern, we have hundreds of residential tenants living on Main Street South. And I'm very slow at this, I could probably use some assistance. I'm clicking, nothing's happening. Click, 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 click. Sorry. Could you click me through? These tenants sign leases and commit to Main South. They live and dine and shop and sometimes work on Main Street. In our building, we currently have several young professionals. I have an architect who has offices and a residential loft in our building. He, I have a cardiac surgeon who works out of Southlake, a bank manager with BMO, actually, and a professor at Seneca.
Okay. And I have you at five minutes.
Yeah, these are professionals, and they need a good night's sleep.
I'll need council's permission to extend the five minutes.
Oh, I beg your pardon.
So I'll take a motion. Counselor Kerwin? Counselor Spohm?
Thank you.
All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you. An additional five minutes, please.
I really appreciate it. Their lifestyle should be respected, and they are the backbone of the street. I mean, hundreds and hundreds of people that come and sign a lease and make a commitment to Main Street. In closing, we love patios, we need patios, and we want patios. Let's open the opportunity of patios up to all the restaurants and cafes. For instance, this is a terrific spot for some tables and chairs, a demonstration of the this is a terrific spot for some tables and chairs, a demonstration of the number of residential residents on the street, they're over every shop, very sensitive to noise after 11:00, and they pour out onto the streets and eat, and the surgeon says he eats at a different restaurant every night, and he absolutely loves the proximity to the hospital. And new restaurants opening all the time. Thank you very much for your consideration, and...
Any questions, clarification?
Yeah.
Have motion then to receive the deputation, Counselor Kerwin, Counselor Sponga, all those in favor? That is Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's bring forward item number 14 then, and that is the staff recommendation with respect to the pilot project for patios in front of some cafes. Recommendations are before you, could I have a motion with respect to the recommendations? Counselor Sponga moves the recommendations, Counselor Vega is the second, Counselor Sponga as the mover.
I want to say that, first of all, this is the second time...
Oh, Joe, your button, please, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think this is the second time, actually, it was in front of us at the last committee of the whole, and I think I moved to have referred back to the BIA for another meeting, and actually, I had an opportunity at that time to ensure that we have proper consultation with the BIA membership. At the last meeting of the BIA, and I did not see the minutes attached to this report, and through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe to the clerk, I'm not sure if the minutes are ready yet or if they're coming to the next committee of the whole, but there was a resolution from the BIA to bring this item, to move this item forward. There were several BIA members that attended that meeting, and for me, it was very important to hear from not just the board, but from the general membership of the BIA, and except with one or two, except for one or two exceptions, I think it was, it was something that the majority of the membership had agreed to explore for one year. My understanding is that did tie this, there was some requests and some, in terms of what time the patio operations would have to cease, and my understanding was at that point, the clarification that was given by Mr. Callio was that it would be tied to our noise bylaw, so I believe 11:00 o'clock, the patios would have to cease the operation, and there was also some discussion that maybe they should be further restricted to 10:00 o'clock. Having said that, perhaps I would like to move that as an amendment, and also, I think, I look at the report, and although there is a recommendation to vet the design of the report through the Heritage Conservation or Advisory Committee, I just wanted to get perhaps through you, Mr. Mayor, either from Mr. Horton or from Economic Development or the Planning Department, an idea in terms of what the design guidelines associated would be, are we looking for basically something that is made out of pressure-treated cedar or is it something that's built tastefully? How will we assess that process?
Mr. Callio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, there's a couple of things that we will be looking at. First of all, there's a whole staff team of about, I think there's five or six departments, we'll be looking at every application that does come in to look at design, parking, access for fire trucks, a whole range of different issues that need to be looked at. With respect to the design, first of all, anybody coming in will have to have a pre-engineered stamped drawing to submit, to show the structural integrity and to clearly show what the design is going to be made of and what it looks like. So likely, some of these designs will be coming in in wood with, we're going to insist on attractive flowers and to dress up the walkway portion. There's also an opportunity for the proponents to, within any licensed areas, which have to be fenced off according to their liquor license, they have to fence that off, that could be, for instance, something like wrought iron. So there's a range of different types of design parameters that our internal group will look at, and hopefully, we all want to see a high-quality design, and that's what we'll be striving to see in the whole, in the whole process.
One follow-up question, Mr. Mayor, through you, I don't see violent enforcement here, I was going to ask the Commissioner, but I think she's gone as well, I was going to ask, what is the present, what are the present regulations in terms of timing? Would the patios open at a certain time of the year, close at a certain time of the year? And in terms of the hours of operation right now, I believe there are two patios right now, open on Main Street, one at Gray Goat and one at...
Cachet.
Cachet, thank you. And I just wonder what time those two patios, until what time those two patios are open at, is it 11:00 or 10:00 P.M.?
Do we know that, Mr. Horton?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, under our noise bylaw, it is currently 11:00 P.M. that they close.
Both patios are, okay.
The outdoor serving area, under our licensing bylaw, closes at 11:00 P.M.
At 11:00 P.M.
Thank you. And the second, or Counselor Vega, I think?
Couple of comments, one, I believe the patio and patio pilot project will be very, very successful, it's something that many residents and even restaurants have been talking about for a number of years, I'm very pleased that we're moving forward with this, and it is, this is a limited pilot, two patios, I'm hoping that it's very successful and that any impact that there may be on the community will be mitigated. Just for clarification, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Sponga, I believe you said you wanted these pilots to go till 10:00 o'clock as opposed to 11:00?
There had been some discussion, Ms. Mayor?
Yep, Counselor Sponga.
There had been some discussion at the BIA meeting about further restricting the hours of operation or tying them to the, to the noise bylaw, so I wanted some clarification on that. So my understanding is that the bylaw, the patios can operate until 11:00 P.M. I thought that some restriction, perhaps further restrictions were in place for the Gray Goat or the, or Cachet, but I'm being told that they operate until 11:00, so I think it would just be fair. I have not received any complaints since the patio at the Gray Goat is open, and as you recall, we had a lot of discussion at council about that operation, and the keepers of that establishment made a commitment to comply with the noise bylaw and to be in constant communication with the adjacent resident, and has worked fantastically. So if that's the case, I don't have an issue with giving this patio, this proposed pilot the same attitude in terms of hours of operation.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
I wonder if I could just, if our acting CAO could add something to that as well. Mr. Mayor, thank you. I did want to just confirm what the counselor has said, that the restriction is 11:00, however, we do not permit amplified music on any of the patios, so that is a restriction that is there. And certainly, if council wishes to restrict this one further to 10:00 P.M., staff would be, would be happy to do so on the pilots, just to see how it moves forward. Thank you.
If I can, thank you very much, you actually anticipated my question, I knew that we restricted music at the, amplified music at the Gray Goat, and, which was the main concern there. Perhaps we can include that in this, that seems to be something that we're already doing, and it seems to be also a way of avoiding a problem, that perhaps we can include the restriction of amplified music out on the patios.
Just to clarify, either with Andrew, so that bylaw would apply itself, so it would be, I know that we want to reinforce it, but it would be redundant to...
Okay, no, that's right, as long as it's included in there.
So it's the same bylaw for all patios, I think, and at the risk of getting more in the water too soon.
Yeah.
Okay, clause five does cover that, but I think if we're going to try this pilot project, we should do it on the basis that it be consistent on an ongoing basis, so that would make it a better test as well.
Yeah, if that's included, that's absolutely fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry, Tom. Counselor Twain?
Okay, I do have a few questions and a few concerns over, I guess, the having a limited number, and it says that no more than two. And I guess my concern is, that was sort of a flag to me, is that if we're going to have a project, then why are we limiting it to two? Why are we picking these particular two? So that was my first concern. A couple of questions through you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, was, I'm just wondering how this came about to start, because we haven't really discussed, like, this has sort of happened, and we've never really heard of having an outdoor patio come forward and moving forward with it. And I was just looking at the Community Improvement Plan that we had for 2001, and it talks about a potential that exists to enhance the role of the street as a pedestrian-friendly environment throughout summer months, as the plan calls for a downtown full of outdoor places to celebrate community spirit, including cafes, outdoor seating, courtyards, and public open spaces. And I remember, I think it was at one point, that there was discussion about actually closing the downtown area during the summer months, say for July and August, sort of like we have done for Canada Day. And certainly, there, you know, I mean, being, having traveled in Europe and stuff, there's certainly lots of areas there that have pedestrian-only areas that it's not open to traffic, and studies have been done that businesses actually have an increase in sales when that is the case, when people are able to just walk by stores opposed to drive-by, they're more inclined to spend more money. So I'm just wondering, are we, rather than jumping in to just having a pilot project with two patios and having the structures built like they are in Berry, which, I mean, I don't know if, how attractive some of them are, some of them really aren't, but also, so my concerns are twofold. One is the fact that we are limiting it to two, why are we choosing, and how are we choosing those two? Do we have, how many restaurants perhaps have come forward already to have asked about having the ability to have an outdoor cafe? And also, what about businesses that don't have a restaurant but are perhaps clothing retailers? Are they going to be able to have any position of having ability to be, to extend out their doors as well? So I think there's certainly, I think there's interest, and I think there's certainly something that should be investigated, but I think it should be done in a much broader way of having, you know, we have public meetings for the change in the bylaw, which is statutory, this is something that I think there's so many different aspects that we could bring into the fold, rather than just, just starting off with permitting a two-restaurant pilot for this year, and I think there's lots of potential for downtown New Market to have some other, some other options too, including the ones I mentioned about even closing the streets during the summer months.
Mr. Callio?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, the BIA over the past, ever since I've been involved, has looked at longer closing, or street closings, over Saturdays, Friday nights, even over weekends, and consistently, it comes back that it's not acceptable to all of the BIA members, so we, or they have always decided not to close the street for weekends, or, you know, from May to September, every Saturday it's closed, it just, it didn't work for a number of merchants, so that has really gone off the table. They are exploring the opportunity right now, maybe to open up the street on a Friday night, but that's just very tentative at this point. With respect to some of your other questions, I'm just trying to go through some of them, they did look at a number of things, process, parking, and I think another one that they did bring up was fairness, and why would we go with a couple of pilot projects when there might be other businesses that could take advantage of this? And what they've agreed is where the pilot would apply only to those requiring on-street parking, where there is an opportunity for restaurants or merchants to put a patio on the sidewalk itself without impacting on-street parking, that they wanted us to consider that, subject to all the same design criteria, and in particular, allowing for accessibility, which I believe our bylaw is 1.8 meters, some sidewalks will not allow that, some, you might be able to do it in certain areas, but there was an element of fairness to look at anybody who came in to see if they could fit on the sidewalk itself. But with respect to the on-street parking, we're looking at two, to minimize the impact on actual parking, because that is one of the issues, and the way we are looking at deciding, we are, there's some time pressure here, because by the time people spend the money, design, build, get the approvals in place, if council sees fit to go forward with this, we're getting into mid to late June, and it is a fair expense to the merchants that go ahead and build this, and they will take it out then, and then, if the pilot goes well, and they reapply and they're accepted next year, they would reinstall it. So we're trying to move this as quickly as we can to meet the merchants on the street. We would make sure through our team of internal staff that those that go forward and meet all the requirements, and we're totally satisfied that it's going to be a great-looking project that minimizes impact on parking and other things, and access for sidewalks, then those that meet all our requirements would get approved within the two pilots.
Okay, I just feel that, you know what, I don't know how, I mean, if we were thinking about doing this, we should have, I think we're kind of late, I'll be honest, I think we're already into the season, and by the time this goes through the process, it is going to be quite late. So that being said, I'd be more comfortable in having a more wholesome discussion and look at what, you know, I mean, other ways of doing an outdoor area, and again, looking at pedestrian-only, you know, looking back to our Community Improvement Plan of 2001, we talked to that about, you know, closing the street and making it more pedestrian-friendly, and I would, I mean, certainly would like to sort of investigate a bit more, rather than just jumping into quickly a pilot project that were just two locations. And if we do go ahead with it, I'd maybe, I would like to see maybe as a lottery, maybe choice of doing it, as opposed to how we're picking them with, so that's just some comments.
Thank you.
See what my colleagues say.
Thank you, Counselor Sponga, then Counselor Hampton.
Thank you, I think one of, I think Counselor Twain touches on a good point, and one of the fact is that, I think one of the, I'll go back, actually, sorry, let me start again, one of the questions I think that was asked, and I'm not sure if Mr. Callio answered it, was how did this start, how did this come about? And it was actually, my understanding was actually a couple of restaurateurs that actually approached staff to look at this opportunity and having this move forward for this year as a pilot project. Having said that, since that meeting last Tuesday night, I believe, and I believe Counselor Hampton and Mayor Van Bynan attended as well, should recognize that, I had several calls from several restaurateurs on Main Street, they really are supportive of this, even if they don't get, if they're not allocated a pilot for this year, simply because they want to see a move forward and they want to be able to have an evaluation of the first year and learn from it, and see how it could either work or change it. But having said that, I think one of the biggest concerns, and speaking of one of the restaurateurs, was that I was quite surprised that this one particular location is only looking at one parking spot, not looking at more than six tables, five to six tables, and at this point, their assessment of the cost for that, to go through the design, the process, and actually build it, is $25,000, so it's not a cheap proposition. And so their biggest concern is, plead to me, was try to get this moving as quick as possible, because it's something we really want to do, and we may not capture a revenue out of it this year because of the late timing, but they are, they feel that once customers and residents of New Market have an opportunity to experience this, and the businesses adjacent have some concerns, that those, that we'll see that it's something worthwhile, exploring, and of course, there'll be some lessons learned that we can tweak for next year. So having said that, I think it's very imperative that if we do this, we also get a bit of an idea of what, how long the timing is between the time that, if council was to ratify this at the next meeting, and if somebody was to apply, how long that application process would take, and I don't know, not sure if anybody can answer that question.
Mr. Callio?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you did approve it and at council next Monday, then theoretically, somebody could make an application Tuesday morning for a permit. We have a, we're just about finalized a whole package for applicants, it will be completed by the end of this week, subject to your decision today. So... So applicants will come in, they will be given the package, they, they will be, when they apply, we would hope, and we, and, and our staff recognize the, the need to move quickly on this, that we would hope within two to three weeks, the, the initial two companies, two businesses would be approved for the on-street patio. And that still brings you into almost June, by the time they get their plans done up and design and build. So mid-June would likely be the earliest, optimistically, that they could get the patios installed. It still gives them two and a half, well, say, three months, because we will run from, till about the middle of October with these, and then they do have to be removed. That's an optimistic timeline, but the, the merchants that are interested are willing to move a little later this year in order to potentially get it approved again and keep it up for subsequent years. So they're willing to make, take that risk.
Thank you. Counselor Hempen.
Thank you. I tend to agree with Counselor Spong's comments that if we're going to do this, we need to do this fairly quickly. I was at that BIA meeting, and I know there are some residents or some business owners who do have some concerns, and that their business requires parking because of the nature of their business, and the people that they're catering to maybe have mobility issues and are elderly people, and parking is very important to them. So with having a pilot, I believe that, I believe that's the right approach for one year, and we give it a try, and we should be moving on this as quickly as possible. But also, I want to make it clear that I feel that as a counselor, if we're going to make this a pilot, that we need to make the applicants very, very aware that this is a pilot project. You make a capital cost, and we get feedback from the businesses on Main Street and the residents, and if there are concerns, the council's going to be looking at this again. So I, I truly believe that that is something, something that's very important, that we make very, very clear, and even some type of signage on the outside of the patio saying this is a BIA or a New Market pilot project that will be looked at again in the future. My concern is that once someone makes this big capital expenditure, that there's this expectation that now I've built this, and I've spent, I've heard a number of $25,000, a larger one, I've spent more, that automatically I should be able to have it again the following year. And that just isn't the case. And I believe when we have the selection of two, and I think two is appropriate as a pilot to be, to have a look at, that it be vetted through, through staff, and that decisions on who gets the patio should be based on design standards, and who comes up with the best design, and the most attractive patio that really brings some, some beauty and some vibrance to Main Street. So I hope, hopefully, those things will be included in the application, and that strong message that this is purely a pilot. Thank you.
Thank you. Regional Counselor.
Thanks very much. Just want to start by saying I think that, that the BIA and staff and others that are engaged in a, in a process to try to improve and bring even greater life and vibrancy and customers frankly to, to the Main Street is, I think can only be a good thing, and that it's being looked at is, I think, you know, admirable, and there's, there's risk involved in, in process, and there's discomfort. And I think this has the potential to lead to, to even greater vitality in our downtown, which has seen a great increase in vitality in the recent, recent years. Couple of things I want to state, the first is that I'm, you know, if this pilot is successful, that will mean more people parking somewhere. So, I mean, some of them will walk, but some of them won't, and it will be more parking. And we're going to have our Old Town Hall opening soon. We've got at least two, if not three, restaurants on the, on the verge of opening, and I think we need to get, and I'm going to be asking for us to, at the next Community Center Lance Task Force and Parking Task Force, that we've, we've got to look quickly at what our options are. Parking in the downtown is, is very tight right now, and it's tight because it's been successful, and it's great, it's exciting. Everybody's talking about how exciting Main Street is, and it's fantastic, but we can't wait for four or five years and wake up five years from now and go, oh, boy, now it's a crisis. It's, it's, it's tight now, and it's not a crisis, but we can't wait until it becomes one. So I think we really have to spend a bit of time and committee and, and look at what our options are over the next several years to make sure we address that, because if we're going to, as we should, continue to try to find ways to bring more life and more people into our downtown core, we've got to make sure we can provide for it. And, and I'm not suggesting that we can't at this moment, but I'd hate to see that moment go by and then go, now let's start thinking about it. So I know we've done some work, we've got some parking strategies that we have, and we can, and use those to greater inform, but I think we need to have a real clear blueprint going forward for the next, next five years. I am, and I'd just like staff to comment, and maybe I missed it in the two reports, but is that, is the representation that's been provided to us that each sidewalk patio will involve the closing of four parking spots? Was that in the reports, or?
Mr. Calio.
What's, what is the situation?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. There was no stipulation about the number of parking spaces to be removed as part. It was going to be based on the design, given, as you heard the deputant, some buildings are wider, some have narrow spaces, they might only need one spot, some might need two. So it's a question of fitting whatever the needs are to the building face, to how many spaces they need. We don't know, but we could certainly say a maximum, if, if that's something you'd like to include, a maximum number of spaces to be, be removed as part of this pilot. We could look at that, and then the applicants have to design around, around that standard.
Yeah, and my comment to that would be, I think that's something we should do. I mean, I don't think it would be wise of me as a member of council to pass a pilot project that involves the closing of a yet-to-be-decided number of spaces. I think we need to have a bit of a sense. I mean, I understand what you're saying about the design driving to, to agree, but as you said, I think we can contain that a bit. I hear from other members of council on that, but I think we need to, to manage that a little bit. So what is your understanding of one parking spot worth of tables, let's call it, would require how many parking spot closures?
Mr. Calio.
In, in the downtown, the parking spaces are fairly long along Main Street. So my expectation is, I can't say per table, or how many tables per space. We would have one or two spaces likely removed for the applicants that are sort of considering doing this. In the one case that it has a wider, a wider storefront, I just have some reservations, whether, if they've covered the whole sidewalk, whether it would be two spaces or three spaces, but it would not be more than that. I suspect we could still keep it to two, but certainly one of the other applicants is likely, all we can do is one space, and if there's some, and there's a couple other that have expressed interest that they'd like we'd only be able to fit one space. So I can't say per table.
Okay, well, I'll wait to hear feedback from other members of council, but I'd suggest that we consider limited to, to, two spaces for, for the, indicate that the application, you must present a design that requires no more than two parking spaces, because I think we have to watch the impact. I mean, I think overall, there's more upside, but there is a concern about the impact on other, other businesses around the area. The, the other area I'd like to comment on is the hours. I actually, I actually think we should lean towards the 10:00 PM closing. I mean, the one thing we've heard over and over is that it's important for the downtown to have people living there as well as shopping there or owning stores, and so I, I'm not saying 11 couldn't work, but it is a pilot, and it's easier to go, to get, you know, a successful pilot, and then look at expanding in different ways in the future than going in other directions, so. And I know there's, well, there's other businesses that can stay up to 11, but this is a pilot that was, from what I'm hearing, requested by the businesses, some businesses, I don't know which ones, but some businesses. So I think that in, in 10 o'clock, there's not too many people eating dinner after that point. I'm certainly not, I go to bed pretty early, but, but it's, it's, I think it is, it's getting pretty late. So if, if that was feasible, I would lean to that, that way. I'd rather play it safe to start with and understand where things are and, and move from there. My final comment, and Counselor Hempen and Counselor Twain both touched on it, but I'm, again, I want to echo Counselor Hempen's words, that we need to impress as much as possible, perhaps something signed or something written to the agreements that states clearly, this is a pilot project, your investment is your own, and this project may not continue into a second year, and that's a risk you assume. I mean, because if somebody's spending $25,000 and already talking about, well, I'm sure it'll go another year, that's great, as long as they're confident, because they're just so confident it's going to work out, but not because they, you know, then, I don't want people coming back sitting in front of this saying, well, you have to approve it again, I spent too much money for you to stop. I mean, we have to approve it again based upon whether it works, and whether it's successful, and whether it operates the way we hoped it would. So I hope that's really impressed on people. And then, in terms of the fairness aspect, it's hard to do a pilot, and it's hard to start from somewhere and, and provide perfect equity across the board, and I do support moving forward on this and seeing if it is viable or not. And again, I recognize that it's, it will have impact on some businesses, and I recognize that there's some downside, but overall, I think there's opportunity, greater opportunity. So, but I, I am concerned about how we handle that, and I guess what I'm wondering through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Calio, is have we defined the criteria yet? And will people be applying, well, knowing the criteria upon which they will be judged? I'll be honest, I almost, I hear Counselor Hempen's point about the best design should win, and I, I think he's probably right, but Counselor Twain's point about, you know, maybe you meet certain design standards, and that's a lottery or something, because I'm really worried, you know, patios can be very lucrative. We're picking, to a degree, we could be seen to be picking winners and losers here financially, and whenever government's in that spot, I get nervous. And so I, I really want this process to be, you know, I know it can't be bulletproof, but very clear in what's the, what's the criteria upfront, what will be judged upon, and I would prefer to see, you know, a set of criteria that you must pass in terms of level of design, et cetera, and if there's three or four, then maybe it's random for those four or something, but starting to pick, if they're really close at the end and saying, well, that one just seemed a little better, boy, that's gray area that could be very lucrative, and it makes me a bit concerned. So I'd be, interested in your comments on that, Mr. Calio.
Thank you. Mr. Calio.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. We will have minimum design standards, but our thought was, we don't, we don't know how many there's going to be there, to come for the on-street parking side of it. I don't know how many there will be for the sidewalk patio side, because the, there aren't that many spaces that you are physically able to do it in the downtown. So for the on-street parking, we will have minimum standards, we will be assessing everything. Our thought, I mean, it's going to be a process. Our thought was, when, when we do have two fully complete applications, that everybody says yes, it meets our requirements, those are the ones that get endorsed. If we get three people coming in next Tuesday morning, applying, we assess them all fairly, look at them, get them in, but at some point, you have to make a decision on the pilot, and I'm not quite sure. Our thought was, a fully complete and agreeable design and package that's submitted to the town should be accepted. If there's another way of doing it, if we give them a timeline to get it in, and we get four applications that are fully acceptable, and we do a lottery, we can do that. I'll leave it in your hands.
If I can, Mr. Mayor, I, I feel quite strongly that it shouldn't be just first come, first served, and the first complete application in the door, or that meets the standards, obviously, that you've outlined, but I just think that there, you know, I, I don't know how you'd make people aware of that, and the time you'd take to make them aware that, well, the first one or two here, you'd be better off just to say this is the cutoff date, and I, I really think that, and to Counselor Hempen's point, I hate to find out that you've got, you know, after two complete ones, an outstanding one came, and, but the other two had moved forward. And so I would, I would urge us to consider a, I know you want to keep moving on a timeline, even if it has to be tight, but make sure everybody knows quickly, every restaurant hand-delivered, you've got, you know, three weeks, or whatever it is, whatever period you think is appropriate, and then cut it off, and, and then get the applicants, and whether you do it by the best two designs, as Counselor Hempen's saying, or they all meet a certain criteria, and if there's four of them, you pick two randomly, which I lean towards, but, you know, if everybody's got an input, I, but I do think it shouldn't just be the first two, I feel pretty strongly about that. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I've got one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. You've mentioned, and if it was in the report, I didn't pick up on it, apologize if the BIA is aware of it, I guess, but you said that's for the on-street side of it. And I heard you earlier mention maybe other, or is that part of this report, or is that, I mean, are we authorizing something else, and I'm not completely, I don't, I don't have, know too much about it anyway?
This was brought up at the BIA meeting regarding the issue of fairness, about why allowing two patios to proceed when there could be other ones that want to proceed that maybe just wouldn't fit on an on-street situation, or couldn't afford to do the on-street, you know, spend $25,000. Well, why couldn't we allow a nice green shop or a coffee shop to put a patio out, a formal patio? Some of them are doing it right now with little bistro chairs, which, yeah. So we would formalize that process, that they would have to apply, pay the fee, be regulated, and they would meet the same design criteria, put the patio, the only stipulation being in addition to the design criteria, is that because they're only on the sidewalk, we still have to have that 1.5, 1.8, 1.5-meter strip that's required by our bylaw to allow for people and, and strollers and wheelchairs. So that was, that was the suggestion that the BIA brought forward at their meeting, so we've added it to this report, subsequent to our previous report.
Oh, it's in here? I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr.?
Yeah, item number three, or point number three.
Patio and sidewalk.
I did not know that that's what it meant. Is it also in the tech body of the report? Explain that that's what that line meant? Okay.
Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick comment, just sitting back listening, just to add further clarification for us moving out of the report and to potential direction. There's a couple of points. One was around the time change from what was 10 o'clock in the resolution passed by the BIA. It was talked about potentially being 11, and then talked again about moving it back. So just for, for council's benefit, again, it did state in the resolution that the pilot project did speak of a 10:00 PM noise cutoff, so just something to consider as council's giving direction to staff in that regard, because right now, I'm not sure if we've lined it at 11 or at 10. The other one was around the selection process, and if there is any specific direction from council in that regard, was discussed potentially a time window with established criteria, potential lottery of acceptable applications based on that criteria, or going the route of any other way, it would be helpful for staff if that can be clarified in the, in what is potentially adopted by council.
Thank you.
So, through you, Mr. Mayor, I guess what I'd ask my last question to staff is that for this item three, permit patios and sidewalks and bowl of words where possible, I, I kind of thought that was referring to the pilot. So I guess my question to that is, this, I mean, I appreciate why the BIA brought it up, but I guess, are we sure that in this same time period, we can implement another new policy around the use of the sidewalk, or, I mean, aside from the status quo and permitting it, and are we confident we can operationalize that? It just seems like there's a lot, I, I know from the up-down Main Street, there's quite a few who do it, and would they all have to get enclosures and go through a process, or would they be stopped then otherwise? And I, I don't know what we're getting into there, that's a bit of another can of worms. I've got, I've got one can open here, I'm kind of, you know, feeling a little uncertain about, so.
Mr. Calio.
Yes, just as a follow-up to the regional counselor's previous question, we did bring it up in the report at the bottom of page one regarding other types of patios, and again, it was in, maybe it wasn't brought out quite as clearly as it should have, but it definitely was a result of the BIA requesting fairness, and that anybody who didn't require on-street parking could go through the same process of having patios. That being said, we feel if any, if any of those applicants want to come forward and submit an application and go through the process, and not require on-street parking, we're quite prepared to deal with it. I think the bigger issue is the taking out the parking, and that was the concern of the BIA members, and having more patios on the sidewalk, provided they meet all the accessibility requirements, shouldn't be a major issue for us. I don't expect there will be that many coming in, and maybe we will get more, but I don't expect we're going to get that many, because there will be a cost to do this, even to do a sidewalk patio, that we will have design standards. You can't just put, you know, for instance, plastic chairs out, and.
So that's my, that's my question, though. If people can put forward to this process, which I'm, I just think is a little undefined at this point, but they can put forward an application to that process outside of the two pilots, does that mean we're going to say to anybody who currently has two or three tables out anywhere that they can't anymore unless they have this design and this standard? This is the part I'm having trouble with.
Mr. Calio.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. That was brought up at the BIA meeting, and be careful what you wish for. You know, some people are out there now, and it's quite nice up against the buildings, and if we try And if we try to move down the regulation path, it may cause more problems than currently exist with some of those small merchants that have a couple of tables out against their wall. But we felt it was important to bring it forward because this is what the BIA wanted. So I'll leave it in Counsel's hands whether they want to include that as part of this pilot.
Okay, I'll stop talking now, just to say that I think on that one, I'd rather get a little more information to Counsel because it sounds like it could be implemented and have some people upset that they're either being stopped or not allowed. And I just don't understand if that one works enough. And so, and maybe we can't handle that one this season and hopefully that Main Street will be patient, we just take on one thing at a time. But my leniency would be, let's slow down, understand that one a little bit more and put some policy or criteria in place and, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sponga, then Counselor Twain.
Yeah, just want to bring a couple of things into context. First of all, one of the reasons why I asked if I would have, I said earlier in my presentation earlier that I would have preferred if we had the minutes of that meeting, of the BIA board meeting alongside with this, just so that we could refer to the recommendation that came out. And again, I'm not sure, I don't think it's included anywhere in the report, but I, it is.
It's the last page, I think, page 55?
But I don't believe that the actual, and this is where I would like to have maybe some clarification from the Chair of the BIA if possible, because I don't believe that the actual recommendation number three was actually passed at the BIA meeting. And I think that discussion at the BIA meeting was exactly around the fact that right now, at this point, there are some business people that have taken it, that have provided for outdoor tables and chairs. And I think that the discussion at the BIA at that meeting was around the fact that we should move ahead with the pilot project and at the same time, have a discussion eventually with staff at the Towne New Market around what the requirements would be for those tables and chairs outside the stores, but not to try to put the two together because if anything, this process may become unfair to those that presently have a little table and some chairs outside. So actually, I would love to hear from the Chair of the BIA, but I also have some amendments in front that, pardon me, that I'd like to make to the motion.
So the motion is to hear the Chair of the BIA?
Yeah, just in clarification of the...
Could I have a second?
What was actually moved?
Okay. Moved by Counselor Sponga, seconded by Counselor Hampton. Go ahead.
Correct, Joe. The resolution from the BIA was to defer and investigate the other opportunities for other restaurants to put tables and chairs. We didn't make any resolution to recommend to Counsel to approve anything in that nature.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. Name and address, please, through the...
Oh, Glenn Wilson, 255 Main Street, South.
Thank you. And he's the Chair of the BIA?
I'm the Chair of the BIA.
And I'm assuming that we can send it to this, yeah. The other question I had is that there was some discussion, if I recall, about the 10:00 cutoff, but I don't believe there was any resolutions passed with respect to the 10:00 cutoff. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, in fact, that was the resolution that the patio's cease-stop rate is 10:00.
Okay, okay, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Okay. Thank you. Motion then to receive this deputation. Counselor Sponga, Counselor Room Plumley, all those in favor? Let us care. Okay, can we, Counselor Twain, and then maybe we can get to a decision point here.
When we investigated other areas that did the patios, I guess specifically Berry seems to come up all the time, how did they start? Did they start with a pilot project or did they just go ahead and do a project as it is, as you see it today?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Berry as one of the examples that we tended to refer to in all the various aspects of our comparison, they did begin with a pilot project, I believe, in the first year, starting with perhaps five patios. Seen a great deal of success. Every year, they're having more patios come in, more applicants, and it's spreading out across their downtown. They've entertained ideas of closing off more of the lanes and more of the streets as Counselor Twain's mentioned, but generally, they have begun as a pilot project.
Okay. So through you, Mr. Mayor, if we were to proceed with this as a pilot project, are we looking at expanding it? And I'm just, I guess where my apprehension is with this a little bit is just, I feel like I don't have enough information to, you know, I mean, of what's going to happen in the future. I mean, what, you know, just a pilot project and to Counselor Hampton's statement about, you know, I mean, the costs involved and, you know, wondering if it's going to, you know, move forward and all of those things. So, I mean, is there intention to perhaps move it to a larger scale? And I'll be inclined to say that, I think two, honestly, I don't know, maybe we will only get two, and I don't know. But I just, I'm struggling with just permitting two. I think it's just, it's just a very, it's a small number, I know, and I know it's a pilot project, but I just feel like we're limiting businesses' ability to do in fairness. And I think that's where my struggle is with this.
Thank you. The, I think the intent is, as a pilot project, we'll see what the results are. And what we learn will probably determine as to whether or not we expand or discontinue the process. So it's a matter of, and I guess I look also towards what we did with the outdoor rinks. You know, that was, that really took off and it was important for us to come to a decision and to get, to mobilize and implement fairly quickly. And it was done specifically for the purpose of understanding how effective that was or what the community responds to us. And I see that this is pretty much the same as that, and that we start off with two, I think is a good start. And then let's not, let's not assume where we're going to go or where we're not going to go. Let's find out what we discover over the next couple of months and then we can go forward from there. But, and I guess that's my own view. Counselor Sponga?
Yeah, I would like to make amendment, Mr. Mayor, to the application. I don't know if I could, procedurally, if I can do that.
Yeah, it's, you can make an amendment now, and if the second, who is the second?
Counselor Vay.
Counselor Vay, if the second finds that friendly, we don't need to vote on it. But what are your amendments?
I'd like to propose the following amendment, that we remove clause number three and delete it, and that staff work with applicants to permit patios and sidewalks and boulevards where possible. That issue, the BIA will be pursuing that under a separate item, separate...
Hey, Joey, just clarified, is that, okay, so what you're saying is that you don't, you only want the patios on the, where there's parking space, because it could be on the boulevard, but...
Only want to deal with the pilot projects for the, for the patios on road allowances.
Okay. Let's use an example. I just want to clarify.
I just don't want to deal with patios on sidewalks right now or any other location.
Would you be happy with that as a direction to staff? And the reason I'm saying that is because if there's an LLBO application, the LLBO portion has to be attached to the building and it would be on the sidewalk, and the net effect is that pedestrians would walk through the parking space.
Right now, most, almost every building on Main Street is right at, how do you say, the town line, town property line? I don't know what the technical...
Property line.
The planners are here, but right at the property line. So any patios, any tables or any chairs or any A-frames that would be placed outside in front of the establishment on Main Street would be on town property right now, so encroaching. So by nature of that fact, if anybody wanted to have a chair out there, patio or an A-frame, there's a process in place already. So what I'm saying is we delete that third clause because that process is in place. There is a policy in place for that.
And again, I'd just like to clarify, does that preclude us from going forward with the pilot? No? Okay, if that's the understanding, we'll go forward with the pilot. Mr. Calio?
For clarity, Mr. Mayor, item number, or point number two refers to patios, two patios requiring the occupation of on-street parking. Number three was intended for those patios that did not require on-street parking. And what I believe Counselor Sponga is mentioning is remove that and we're not going to deal with patios, potential patios on the sidewalk only that don't require on-street parking and go back to two pilots, but those two pilots, the two pilots require on-street parking as part of their pilot.
Okay, thank you. All right, I just didn't want, I just didn't want to be contrary to what we're trying to accomplish. So I appreciate that clarification.
Totally understand. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to replace that, that it be limited to a maximum of two parking spots per application and that the operation of the patios be restricted to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. Is that friendly, Counselor Hing? Counselor Vay?
In terms of limiting the two parking spots, I think that's very reasonable, and I don't really think we'll be getting applications, I'd be looking beyond that anyway, so I think that's reasonable. Limiting it to 10:00 p.m., I think that's reasonable. Also, we may want to change that a year from now after we have some experience. My one concern is, however, eliminating number three. Right now, I don't believe we do regulate the patios that are already put out on the sidewalk. And I'm hearing from staff that it's not an onerous task to start with this, some sort of regulation process for those patios that are the, where the sidewalks are already being used as a patio location. I don't think it's a priority. I think obviously the priority is the one dealing with the on-street parking. But I would like to start the process of regulating the patios that are on our sidewalks on Main Street to basically ensure that we have that 1.5 or 1.8-meter, allowing pedestrians, baby carriages, wheelchairs, et cetera, to pass. It's not a, certainly it's not as pressing perhaps as the other, but I think we should be starting that process. Doesn't mean we're going to come down heavy-handed on those that have put out, traditionally put out a little table, et cetera, et cetera, but I think the process for that should begin. So, you know, I don't, for that reason, I don't think eliminating number three is, I think that's already significant, not necessarily a friendly amendment to that. I would like to have the entire area regulated and see lots of patios out there because I think they're very successful. But I don't really like the ad hoc approach that's been taken so far.
What we could do then is, is we can deal with that change, item number three, we can do with that separately?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay. And then, but with respect to that it would limit it to two parking spots?
And 10:00 p.m., I'm absolutely fine with those.
Now, is that... Can I clarify, two parking spots each or two parking spots in total?
Two parking spots per application.
Okay. All right, okay, so that's the intent then.
And the reason why, Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify that is, a few questions was asked earlier, if there was, if a study was done or a calculation of how many tables could be accommodated for parking spot. And yes, I had the opportunity to meet with a restaurateur on Main Street, one of the potential applicants, and they have assessed that one parking spot would allow them a maximum of six tables for four people, and the cost would be approximately, if not higher, of $25,000.
Okay, good. Thank you. Gee, I have three more speakers, I thought we were getting close to a decision, but I'll hear from Regional Counselor, Counselor Twain.
I'd be adding that, then, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to vote on separately, then I'm not deleting three, I'm leaving it in to be voted on separately.
Yeah, you're...
And I'm adding a seventh recommendation, I guess. Seventh recommendation, limiting the operation to 10:00 p.m. and allowing for a maximum of two per application.
Okay, so we can, we can deal with all of the others and then vote on deleting item number three, okay? Because that wasn't seen as a friendly amendment, so that requires a vote. So we'll deal with the amendment. Okay, Regional Counselor, then Counselor Twain, then Counselor Kerwin.
Thank you very much. The, so first of all, I just want to speak to the number three that we'll be dealing with later. I think that, I think that the key here is, is that if we don't include number three right now, things continue status quo, they operate the way they are. And again, I'm on Main Street probably five times a week, and there's not a problem. Everybody keeps their tables tucked back, it works nice, they look very nice and packed, quite cute, and it works. What it's saying is, if we're going to start to put in place a system that says you have to have design standard requirements too and possibly require a fence around your tables or separations, et cetera, let's just slow down, perhaps let the BIA first of all weigh in if that's what they want, like we did on this first one, which they haven't done, and let's deal with this after this pilot is over next year, if required. But I think it would be unwise of us to try to piggyback that onto this, in particular when the BIA hasn't even taken a position on it. So I think the status quo works fine and we can, we can deal with this after the BIA has weighed in and then have a little more information and a bit more understanding of how that could work and would work because we don't have the same level of information we have here.
Okay.
Did you want me to stop first?
Well, I'm hoping we can get to a decision soon.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, finish.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, I would like to add a recommendation that we direct staff to have a cutoff date for the applications so that they're, that everybody knows clearly, this is the date you have up till this point to provide an application and to be included in that, in that process.
Okay. Is that friendly? Counselor Vay has a friendly amendment? Okay, so we'll deal with all of those collectively. Counselor Twain, and then Counselor Kerwin.
Sorry, just to add to that, I would be comfortable in, with the recommendations as long as we include, but the deadline for submission was certainly was part of it, but also that we, depending on how many applicants we get, that it is a lottery system. I just think that's in all fairness to the businesses, rather than, you know, because once, there's picking and choosing, there's bias in there, I don't know, I just feel comfortable that if we have a deadline, if we get two submissions, great, there are two. If there's three, we pick out of those three or if there's more, and I think that that's the fair way of doing it. So I would ask, I don't know if this is a...
Have to ask the mover and the seconders to whether or not that's friendly.
I'll say I'm a bit concerned with the lottery because one of the important...
Okay, so just, is it friendly or not?
I just want to explain more.
We can discuss that. If you don't think it's friendly, then we'll amend it.
I don't think it's friendly either.
Okay, then we'll, you could propose an amendment after we deal with the previous amendment?
Okay.
All right, Counselor Kerwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll only speak once. You know, Canadians have been cooped up in their homes for five months, six months. We've had two extreme winters. And after I did the Holland River cleanup on Saturday and Neighborhood Network and on Bogart Pond, I went to the city on King Street West and I participated in what they call a chocolate tour. We visited five different establishments that actually make chocolates and cupcakes and so forth. And Toronto was a beehive on King Street, McCall, went up to the Aggo. It was a beehive of people sitting outside, very, very successful, everywhere. They wanted to be in the sun. And it might impact on IDA, but it could be a turnaround that it could be successful because we draw more people down into downtown core, and they come in and look at an establishment that's been there for a long period of time. Whatever we do, and we had the same criticism when we went to the Riverwalk Commons, it was a complete success. The criticism now is, why didn't we make it bigger? I support outdoor patios, totally. And I know why people come to an outdoor patio, because they want to socialize. They come for a beer, they come for a hot dog, they come for whatever is being offered, and they sit outside. And in the downtown core in Toronto, a lot of them walk home or they take public transit. And what we're trying to establish here in the downtown cores, I lived in Germany for six years, I visit Europe normally every year. It's taken for granted that people sit outside and have a glass of wine and kuchen or whatever it might be, and their coffee and so forth. And we've got to move forward. We're not in the 20th century, the 19th century. I commend our staff and the BIA and so forth for moving this forward. Canadians want to sit outside, and we're going to have to find a way to do it. Eventually, we might close off Main Street in certain days so people can sit outside. So whatever we do, let's not put roadblocks in people who want to invest their money in creating a vibrant downtown core. And it's the way we've got to go, and I'm going to be supporting it with as few restrictions as possible. That's what's killing us, why we have, our unemployment is soaring, plants are closing, our governments are imposing so many restrictions on the private individual who wants to invest in this country that they're going elsewhere. How many factories have we seen closed recently? Ten in New Market. They've gone elsewhere. The labor's too high, restriction's too high, government interferes, no one wants to invest anymore. So for heaven's sakes, let's move forward. I'm in favor without all the restrictions.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. A very robust discussion. We have a motion then to amend. The first motion to amend is to delete item number three. And item number three is that the staff work on an application to permit patios and sidewalks in the... and the boulevard where possible. So that was, that was... Any amendments up there for that amendment, don't I?
No, I thought, I took them as friendly.
Okay.
But you could do a separate vote on it.
I just want to clarify. Counselor vague, did you see?
Separate vote.
A separate vote on item number three.
Right.
Yeah, so, so there's two, there's...
My vision is that...
Yeah. Okay. Well, we'll let the clerk clarify that, okay? All right, go ahead.
Sure. So the mover and seconder have it that the third clause be removed, and then you have an additional, a new clause seven, that limits the, the two parking spots per application, and that the operation of the patio be restricted to 10:00 PM. And then an eighth clause that the, the application, that there be an, application deadline be set and advertised.
So that's, if those, all of those items were seen as friendly amendments? No, item number three was not seen as a friendly amendment.
The third one, the third one would just be voted on separately.
Yep, so, so I'll, I'll call the vote on item number three, which is the, which is the permits on sidewalks. All those in favor of deleting...
I'm still not there, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So...
No, sorry. I just, no, can we just break it out? And I just, because I still, I'm, I'm comfortable with parts of this, but not with the process. So I would like it broken out from, one, broken out from number four as well, broken out.
Item number four...
So like, one voted on, two voted on, three voted on, four voted on.
One, two, three, and four. So we'll deal with those separately. Item number five, straightforward. Number six. All right, we'll, we'll talk about each of those motions as we go. So we've been asked to deal with each of these separately. Okay, so, item number one, we have a mover and a seconder, and item number one is that council endorse a 2015 pilot project of outdoor patios in the downtown Newmarket area between Millard and Water Street. All those in favor?
Item number three.
Okay, any opposed? No, okay. Item number two then is that no more than two patios requiring the occupation of on-street parking be included in the pilot. All those in favor of that? Opposed? Okay, that still carries. Item number three, and that staff work with the applicants to permit patios on the sidewalks and the boulevard, and where, and boulevard where possible. So, voting at this point, yeah, if you vote for this, that, that means we go forward with that restriction, and if we delete it, or if we're against doing that, then you need to vote against it, okay? So all those in favor of item number three? Three, four. And that is opposed, so that's, that does not carry. Okay, then item number four is that the applicants are required to complete an application form and other documents deemed necessary by staff. All of those in favor? And opposed? That is carried. Item number five, and that the restrictions of the licensing bylaw, road occupancy permit bylaw, and other regulations be waived where applicable to the satisfaction of staff. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. The next one then is that, and that the Main Street District Business Improvement Association be notified of this action. All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. And we go forward, and that is to limit, Mr. Clerk, the number of applicants to two, and with no more than two parking spots each?
And that the operation of the patio be restricted to 10:00 PM.
Okay. All those in favor of that? Opposed? And that is carried. Next item then is that, that a cutoff date be established. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Twenty, did you wish to put a further motion forward with respect to lottery?
Yeah, can I put a further motion now?
If you have a seconder.
Okay, okay. I have to put a motion forward that the, that the submissions of the applicants be referred to a lottery system to determine the, to determine successful candidates.
Is there a seconder for that? Seconder?
Just put her on the table. Just for a discussion.
Okay, all right, do you wish to speak to that?
I just, again, I just feel that it's the fair way of doing it. I just don't feel comfortable, having, I mean, not that I'm saying that staff won't do a good job, but I just feel that it's, it's a fair way of doing something. If we have four or five applicants, that it is done through, you know, I mean, they have an application process, they know the criteria, they will be fulfilling, the applicant will be fulfilling all the requirements in that application process, and then if it was done by a lottery, I just think it's a fair way of doing it, as opposed to picking and choosing who wins and who doesn't win, and, and, yeah, those are my comments.
Thank you. Seconder, does she speak to that?
I'll speak to it, and I have a concern with it, Mr. Mayor, because for me, what is imperative is that staff has an opportunity to vet the applications against a more appealing design, a location perhaps that is not, I mean, I mean, the design, where the location is, safety, all of the issues that are, that staff is going to be looking for, and for me, that's very important. So, for that reason, I will not be supporting.
Okay. Can I just clarify with Counselor Twenty and the seconder? When we say that's drawn by lottery, should we consider adding where all of the requirements are met, equally met? So we'd expect that, wouldn't it just be a lottery? They'd all have to meet the criteria first? That's understood? Understood, okay.
Will we get a list of criteria? Or can we get a copy of this application first, and then have the council as well?
Okay.
I'd just like to have that information, that, you know, we're, we're, what people will talk to us and question. Listen, ask us about it. It'd be good to have that information.
Okay.
I'm comfortable with that, though.
All right, let's see where the, let's see where the motion goes. Your counsel?
Yeah, I can support the motion put forward by Counselor Twenty, as long as it's subject to, to all applications meeting a certain standards, and design standards and safety standards, as delegated to staff.
As delegated to staff?
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to see it too afterwards, but it'll slow the process down if we have to wait, just...
At some point.
Yeah, just to see it. But otherwise, delegate to staff those, those standard and the criteria.
Okay, so that is a significant enough amendment? We see that as friendly? Counselor Twenty, Counselor Sponga, as delegated to staff? Okay, good. All right, Counselor Hampton.
Thank you. I will not be supporting the motion. I feel comfortable leaving this up to staff and letting them vet the list and basing it on what's the most attractive, and where they feel will bring the most economic advantage to the downtown core, and create some more vibrancy for the street. So I feel comfortable leaving staff with that, with vetting that list.
Thank you. Counselor Kerwin?
Counselor Hampton has spoken admirably on this. I won't be supporting it either. You know, where we are now has been brought forward by creative and innovative businesses, and I know the staff will look at it fairly. A lottery system is not, in my mind, the way to go.
Thank you. I won't be supporting this either. I think our staff, on an ongoing basis, makes decisions about what's best for the town that has commercial value in every contract that we let. So, so staff has the ability to, I think, determine what's in the best interest of the municipality, and, and so I would, I would leave that with staff to make that. So I, I wouldn't support a lottery either. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? And that amendment is defeated. Okay. Now, we do have one other, one other report that we have had someone waiting to hear the outcome of. So before we take a break, let's deal with the next item that we do have an interest in the audience from. And that, I believe, is item number, item number 12, which is the I&amp;I project, okay? So the recommendations are before you. Could I have a motion with respect to the recommendations under item number 12? Counselor Bezance, moved, seconded by Counselor Sponga. Counselor Bezance to speak to the recommendations.
Yes, thank you very much. I guess I'd just like some more information from, from staff with respect to, to this proposal, specifically around timing issues, proposed timing issues, but also, you know, just a little bit more clarity around the, the benefit of this proposal, and whether there had been ever any previous considerations of doing this, and if the town were to, to do this on their own, what would be the, the potential cost to us to, to do a program like this versus, you know, what might be, would be savings and, and the benefit that that would have from a financial standpoint?
Mr. Knollhammer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Counselor Bezance. So this is a very interesting project in that it is a, I'll say it's a good news story, and it's a win-win, if I can describe it that way, for the town, the region, and certainly the proponent. Now, this is involving what's called inflow and infiltration to the sanitary sewer system. And the two aspects are related, but inflow is areas in which storm water or groundwater is, is finding its way into the sanitary sewer system and surcharging it to the point where it affects the capacity of the system, overloads the sanitary treatment plants, and takes away from the capacity that's available to serve development and property. And those, that inflow can find its way through improperly connected storm drain connections to the sanitary system, cross-connections between the storm system and the sanitary system, or even from maintenance holds or catch basins. So those are what I would call erroneous connections. Inflow, sorry, infiltration results when the sanitary sewer pipe starts to become aged, leaky, and groundwater finds its way into it, similarly surcharging it the same way. This project is about trying to monitor those flows and to determine ways in which they can be reduced, if not eliminated in some cases. And that is of benefit for the reasons I mentioned before, in that it, it provides a better level of service for the region and municipality for providing sanitary capacity to development and property owners, potentially avoiding basement backing up or flooding, and getting better use out of the existing facilities without having to create or, or increase the size of the system. With respect to whether it's been done before, or whether this has been tried in the past, the region of York is currently undertaking various monitoring projects to determine the extent of I&amp;I throughout the region. And the reason it's doing that is because the southeast collector trunk sewer that it retained, retained approval to construct in 2010 came with a number of conditions from the MOE, including monitoring this aspect to get more efficient use out of the system. So, the region is doing it as a matter of compliance with the conditions from the MOE. At the same time, I, I do believe the region is doing it for the same reasons as I mentioned, is to get better efficiency out of the existing system and to create some wins, to enable the allocation of sewage capacity to be extended to more development. And your last question, just about cost, if the town or the region were to go on this route alone, you know, I can't speak to the magnitude of this, because it really depends on the amount of inflow infiltration that gets determined in any one catchment area or any one study area. But suffice to say, these are very expensive works to either rehabilitate sanitary sewers, to correct cross-connection issues. This is all underground work. Some of it is fairly straightforward in that there may be eaves or downspout connections into sanitary sewers that might be able to be corrected a little bit less expensively. But, you know, these are definitely in the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars' worth of work.
And if I could ask, what, what would the anticipated timing of this be, assuming it was to move ahead?
Well, today, you have a report seeking authorization for the town to enter into a tripartite agreement with the region, the applicant, and the town, similar in nature to template agreements that have already been struck, tripartite agreements that have already been struck with four other York region municipalities, being Vaughan, Markham, Richmond Hill, and Aurora. And for the terms of that agreement to be similar to that template agreement, and begin work to prepare a work plan, which would involve scoping out areas that have high potential for inflow and infiltration, undertaking a monitoring and assessment program, and then agreeing on an implementation plan between the region, the town, and the applicant. So, all of that will take some months, but, you know, that, my, I anticipate that some of that could be started in 2015, later this year. And in terms of the duration of this work, it really depends on the extent of wins that are able to be acquired.
Mr. Mayor, I know that in previous discussions, particularly around budget issues and the cost of our water system, and making sure that that, that is sustained, and that any potential damage or anything like that would have to be repaired. And so I'm just looking to see whether, you know, the, the benefit to, to the town, but also from the standpoint of any offsetting of cost or, you know, challenges that we may have with our, with our system by, by doing this, and more importantly, by having a third party pay for it.
If I could just respond to that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
So, there is a lot of data that will be collected through this exercise, and the region and town are very interested in reviewing that data to determine the extent in which our own rehabilitation, monitoring, condition assessments of our own sanitary sewer system takes place. We see this very much as a supplement to our own asset management and condition assessment practices and projects that we're undertaking through capital budget and our regular asset management program. And we see this as a really good opportunity to extend the longevity of the allocation that the region provides to municipalities, and we'd like to be included in that group with respect to extending further and supplementing our allocation that we receive from the region by, by this exercise.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seconder, Counselor Sponga?
A number of ques, three or four questions here. So you're Mr. Mayor to Mr. Knollhammer. How does this align with our budget provision for our CCTV scans of our sewers?
Yeah. Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sponga, this, this definitely supplements that. We would want to make sure, as we identify areas in which the condition assessments are being undertaken as part of this project, that we don't duplicate efforts. And in fact, our CCTV monitoring and condition assessments will not only include sanitary, but also storm water and water main infrastructure. So, you know, we see this as supplementing our work.
So it's just enhanced?
Exactly.
Okay. Second is, when, is this tri-party agreement, does it relate specifically to the study, or does it relate to the implementation? So, will it just identify the level of... to the study, or does it relate to the implementation? So, will it just identify the level of INI or, and the locations, or is it actually going to also provide funds for remedial?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is all encompassing, so it includes not only the data gathering, flow monitoring, and identification of work plan, but it also captures the implementation plan, including rehabilitation works of the sanitary sewer system, at the approval of both the region and the town, and at no cost to either party.
So, and now, I'm getting down to the nitty-gritty of my question, the nature of my questions. I would suspect that probably the oldest part of town is very guilty or is contributed to the INI levels. And so, what I'm wondering is, are we reviewing, because what I would think is that some of this work, if not a lot of this work, will have to do with the laterals, whether there's only one single lateral, whether there's appropriate laterals or not, and the lines themselves down the street. Are we going to align our capital project and reconstruction schedule with this INI study so that we can capture efficiencies when we actually get shovel to the ground? Or how's that going to work? Like, are we going to postpone certain jobs or defer certain capital projects on the basis that we will have a clearer assessment now and actually have some funding, because you're telling me it's actually going to go on the ground, the funding, for these capital projects? So, are we going to realign and rethink that whole schedule?
Mr. Noehammer?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, it really depends on the extent of the underground or excavation that might be required as part of the rehabilitation. Many of these things can be done either through lining of the sewer pipe or off the roadway, if it's on a lateral, for instance. So, you know, we would certainly coordinate with our capital works and our operation works as well, to make sure that there is minimal disruption to the residents. Back to your first question about where geographically this work will take place, it really depends on the extent to which the problem exists. And, you know, I would think that probably the newer areas will be less susceptible to leakage or infiltration. There may be some areas where inflow is happening, but, you know, it's more likely that it will be in the more, the older areas of town. And that will be determined through the monitoring and the scope of work that will identify the work plan.
Well, that's why I asked you the last question about aligning the findings from this study with our capital works projects, because I could tell you, for, give you an example, when we did Andrew Street?
Yes.
I think we found several properties that basically both weeping tiles and eaves, everything went into the sewer.
San.
Or the sanitary, right. So, I'm wondering if we're going to tackle, let's say, Park or Millard or Lauren Avenue in the future, or whatever, those areas where we suspect higher levels of INI is occurring, are we going to look at trying to time those projects with the results of the studies? That's all.
Yeah.
You're telling me we are.
We certainly will.
Great news. Thank you.
That was answered.
Yep.
Thank you. Counselor Twain?
Just a clarification of the report, and maybe I'm getting it confused with something else. Didn't we do a pilot project about infiltration in Ward, specifically Ward Three in my area, last year? We had, the region, I thought, had, and it was sort of like, we talked about it, was sort of a win for the town because the region was doing it, where they were lining all the sewer lines and that. And maybe I'm mixing up with something else, but I was sure it was the same type of project.
Yeah.
Mr. Noehammer, go ahead.
So, the region is, as I mentioned, is a condition of their southeast collector trunk sewer approval, that they monitor this situation and try to reduce the amount of inflow and infiltration by 10% within a 20-year timeframe. So, they are very conscious of this aspect and condition that was placed on them. I am aware that they have secured the town's permission to install a number of flow monitoring devices throughout the system, including municipal sewers. I can't tell you exactly how much capital work they've done to rehabilitate that, but that's something that I can return with you in terms of updating you on that.
Peter, I think what the council was referring to is maybe as much as five years ago, we might have had projects where we lined the pipes.
No, last year.
Was it last year?
Last year and the year before.
But we may have had some INI projects that the town undertook themselves in some neighborhoods as an early part. So, there may be some, there may be some information there that we could have back.
I can certainly return with that information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hempen?
I think it's great that we're, we know our infrastructure costs us so much money, and to improve our infrastructure is a great thing for our community. And having somebody else pay the bill is a great thing as well. But going back to Christine, Councilor Bazant's point, is there some low-hanging fruit areas? Because I've heard from your predecessor, and we had some long discussions with him, that there are neighborhoods, and he mentioned, I believe, that Quaker Hill is all of their storm water, and whether that's from a sump pump, or it's from the actual eave troughs, are going directly into sanitary. For myself, I'm wondering if that's a quick fix, and that's an inexpensive fix, I'd love the applicant to pay for the more difficult work, and us handle the less expensive work to get that allocation. I know there's value to the proponent, and I'd like to maximize that value. So, maybe if you could give me an explanation on what it would cost, or are there areas, is that correct, that Quaker Hill is actually putting the, those homes are putting their storm water into the sanitary?
Mr. Noehammer?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Hempen, I'm not familiar with that. I will, you know, try to determine to a greater degree and get more information on that. But to answer your general question about whether there's low-hanging fruit or more expensive solutions, yes, there are. In the whole gamut of trying to reduce inflow and infiltration, there are varying measures that can be done and various corrections that can be made. Some will be more expensive than others, and that's what the region, the town, and the applicant will review in terms of how to move forward on an implementation plan. But I heard your comments, and so, thank you.
So, a follow-up question, then. Can we, as a municipality, ask specifically for areas to be improved to receive that two-to-one ratio?
We can.
Two-to-one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a two-to-one ratio. I can just explain that, so.
So, we're, sorry, just one more question. So, just specifically, that we can identify an area that's, to be quite clear, a more costly area to look after and have the applicant provide that in that area specifically?
Mr. Noehammer?
Well, the town, as a party to the agreement, can certainly, you know, advance or negotiate certain aspects of that agreement. Again, I'll return just to the point of, once we know the extent and of the work that needs to be undertaken, and develop an implementation plan. As part of that, we can talk to which pieces get done by this applicant and which pieces are left out. But I think, at this point, it's really too early to tell in terms of what all the areas are. But, you know, in answer to your question, the town is a party to the agreement, and we can certainly drive some element of negotiation.
I see. And is it, do we delegate authority to you on this application, to staff? Does council delegate the authority to move this application forward?
That's what this proposal is, and I believe it involves, it involves three parties, negotiations among three parties, including the region?
If we wanted to make an amendment that would go to a specific area, is that possible?
I don't know if that's in the template or not.
It could be a direction to staff, if that's what you would like to do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kirwin?
Yes, Mr. Noehammer, I shall be supporting the recommendation, and I'd like to thank you for your thoughtful and professional input into this issue. As you've said, it's a win-win situation. Right across the town, we're trying to come up with things like low-impact development that we incorporated, the McGregor Settlement, this is just another one. I think it's just superb. And to my colleagues, we've already been doing this. We hired a company, if you go through the financial records, a company called Liquiforce, that has gone into our infrastructure and has eliminated a sizable amount of inflow into our pipes, and they've done a great job. And they don't have to dig up the streets. And to Counselor Sponga, those trucks were in your areas for several years, improving that area. So, once again, this magnifies and reinforces what we've already been doing. We're trying to eliminate as much as possible any infiltration into the sewage system, because all that water just costs more money to purify when it goes down to Duffens Creek. So, I think it's just an excellent proposal. It saves the municipality a ton of money. It gets us moving where we wish to be, and it's futuristic. And I thank you, Mr. Noehammer, for being part of this and your comments on it. It's just superb.
Thank you. No further comments, then. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the recommendations. Unopposed, and that is carried. Thank you. Why don't we take a 10, 15-minute break and come back? Why don't we take a 10, 15-minute break and come back?[101.86]
Okay, Commissioner Nohammer.
Yes, three, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Bezance. That is something that staff will be monitoring as a result of this change. And it's further, it's a no-stopping area between Dowson Loop and Sherrill Muse Boulevard. One of the observations that staff had in considering this recommendation was that there were a number of, what's it called, three-point turns that are happening here as parents and others, caregivers, drop off their children and then turn around, which is quite dangerous when you're backing a vehicle up in an area that cars are, as pedestrians are moving through. So we want to make sure that not only was it no parking, but there's no stopping in that short area where the crossing was. But we will be monitoring the impact on the side streets as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. A secondary? Who's the secondary? Regional council?
Yeah, just very briefly. I think it's just, this is a really early and quick demonstration about why it was the right thing for council to do to increase our traffic safety-related budget just in this last budget cycle. And this is, you know, I think this is exactly what residents want to see us spending their tax dollars on. This is about the safety of children and families in a neighborhood. And it's needed and it's been well demonstrated by staff. And I'm glad we've enhanced that budget so we can, we can take measures like these on behalf of the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'll call the question then. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed when that is carried? I think action items have been, no action items listed? There are no petitions or correspondence, reports by regional representatives at council? Any notices of motion? There being none? Oh, Councilor Sponga.
I'm trying to break up some of my new business items. So what I'll do actually, I will give notice that I will be bringing a motion at the next rotation of Committee of the Whole in regards to waste management during weekends on Main Street. And we'll also be bringing forth a motion. Clarification to you, Mr. Mayor, because I think it's somewhat time-sensitive. I just want to, can notice a motion be brought forth to council?
Oh. Mr. Brown.
The procedure by law would allow that if it's time-sensitive.
No, it's okay. I'll bring it, I'll bring it at the, at the next rotation of Committee of the Whole as well. And it's an amendment to the, our present film permitting process where I'm just going to request that an actual map with designated locations for parking and productions be included as part of the film permits, which is not now. Those are two notices of motion for the next Committee of the Whole, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other notices? Being none? Okay, then we'll go to motions. Are there any motions? Being none, new business. Councilor Sponga, Councilor Broom Plumley, then Councilor Bezance, then Councilor Kirwin. Councilor Sponga.
Okay, quickly, as you know, as you probably all heard this weekend, so many of us have been, were, many members of council were involved with the Holland River cleanup. There were a number of trains that traveled through Newmarket over the weekend. And I received about, I don't know, 10 to 20 phone calls during the week. I understand that this was part of some works that GO train needed to perform. But having said that, I think that everybody that was either at the MS Walk or at Walk for Don Hospice or at the farmer's market would have experienced the constant whistle blowing. The trains were empty. They did not carry goods or passengers. And so, Mr. Mayor, I will ask our staff if it's possible. I know that there's been prior direction to staff in regards to the train whistles, but I just wonder, we left the last report that we received knowing that our bylaw was no longer applicable, but staff, I think, committed to report back. And I'm not sure if that, there was a time limit on it or not. And I would like through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe get some clarification from Mr. Nohammer. If not, I would like to request that a progress report and discussions around the mitigation of train whistles with GO train in the region come back in 60 days unless staff is already working on something.
Yep. Mr. Nohammer. Now, I see we have two items here. We have item number two, which is, no, that's, there were two items that-
Outstanding list.
That are outstanding items. There's item number 19 and, and item number 13, number nine and item number 13, both of which were requested by the regional council and yourself around the GO train. And I'm wondering when that was planning to become four, because I think that would all fit with that. Mr. Nohammer?
Yes, three, Mr. Mayor. Staff have been working on both of those requests on the outstanding list that you've just described. And we will be bringing that report forward to the June meeting of Committee of the Whole. I've seen a first draft of it today, and our Director of Engineering has been working with our Senior Traffic Coordinator on the preparation of that report. And we expect to bring it forward in June.
Father, so, that's great, Mr. Mayor. I will not need to pursue a motion or direction to staff. The other quick item I had is we all have been notified that there will be some delays with the opening of the Old Town Hall, potentially a couple of months, if not longer. So which really leads me to believe that perhaps we will see a construction site there for, through the winter again. So I wonder if staff, and I don't know if, Mr. Mayor, through you, this should be, and again, to you, to the Commissioner, whether this should be a direction of staff or a motion. But I would like to know whether staff could explore the possibility of moving the construction trailer, which has been used as an office right now, to a commercial location either adjacent, I know of one old commercial location that's becoming available beginning of June, adjacent to the site, or nearby for the remaining of the construction period through 2016? And whether there's an opportunity to reopen the area at Market Square for parking?
Mr. Nohammer? Is it, yep. Could I just clarify, is there also an upcoming task force for the Old Town Hall in the near future? On the 12th? Okay. All right, go ahead.
Yes, three, Mr. Mayor. I was going to suggest that this matter be discussed further at the Old Town Hall Budget Task Force meeting. I think it's either the 11th, I think it's the 11th, actually. But we are meeting with the contractor and the consultant in this week to try to not only achieve compliance with schedule, but also review matters that might improve the local situation for not only parking, but also minimize disruption for the adjacent residents. So I can certainly raise it in our staff meeting, but I would also think that it could be raised in the Budget Task Force meeting, which is a week today.
Would it be helpful if I was to table a motion that this item be referred to the Budget Task Force?
Certainly.
Just so that there's a natural record, because I have had some pressure from works downtown to see if there's an opportunity to free up as much parking as possible, given the fact that the Main Street is becoming more and more popular. We know there's going to be a delay. And whether we could explore the opportunity of moving that construction office somewhere else for the remainder, remaining construction period.
If that's the will of committee to do so, I'm certainly happy to follow up with that.
I will move the motion that, that the Task Force, the Old Town Hall Budget Task Force explore moving the Old Town Hall Construction Office to a commercial location adjacent or nearby for the remaining construction period in 2016 and Market Square be reopened for parking. I'll move that motion.
Good. 2015.
For the remainder, remaining construction period and into 2016. There will be landscaping works and so forth that will have to be carried out next year, I'm sure. And I'm just- Number four to the Task Force.
Just the construction, yeah, just, why don't we just do it for the construction period? Because my understanding is-
For the construction period.
Okay. And I'm wondering if you would see that as a friendly amendment? And that is that Mr. Nohammer had some additional items that he wanted to add to that? Seek out, seek out efforts to minimize local impact and seek out other?
And, and, or, and/or seek out to lessen the impact, or options for lessening the impact and-
Local impact.
Yeah, local impact.
Okay, do we have a secondary for that?
I'll raise it to the Task Force.
Or why don't we just settle for that as a direction to staff?
Or direction to staff, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilor Broom Plumley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking for a construction update from our Commissioner Peter Nohammer with regards to the Tom Taylor Trail, between Tom Taylor Trail and Savage Road. It's a very important project for our community and it's also a moving target. So I apologize for asking again, but I understand you did have a construction meeting with our Director of Engineering, Rachel Prudhomme, and you may have some, hopefully some good news for our residents.
Mr. Nohammer, you're becoming a popular guy today.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilor Broom Plumley, we have confirmed that the construction is imminent on that piece of Young Street for the sidewalk project. A pre-construction meeting was in fact held, as I indicated at the last time, last update I gave. And the contractor has indicated that the stakeouts for utility locations will be happening within, most likely, the next, next week. So at this point, it appears that construction will start within the next two-week period. And the project is estimated to take about eight weeks to complete. So at this point, it looks like the project will be done somewhere around mid-July.
Excellent. And just one more question through you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that there was lots of communication in the condo board that backs onto that sidewalk. Are they aware or going to be made aware of when this is going to be happening? Or are they already aware that it's coming?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I could certainly take that up with staff to ensure that the communication is established.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bezance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this, this question is directed to the acting CIO. I'm not sure. But it's with respect to an information report we, the council just received and the follow-up on the Glenway Lessons Learned meeting, which we have all been waiting for and anticipating. The memo refers, or the report refers to the securment of an independent facilitator who will facilitate the process. I was delighted to see that that consideration is specifically given to having the facilitator meet with key staff, members of the Glenway Preservation Association, the developer, as well as consultants hired by the town. I think that that's something that the residents had been asking for as part of this process. Specifically, though, my, my questions are around what's the anticipated timing? Have we, have we got a date in mind? Because I think if we're going to be rounding up all of these people to be providing input, that would be important to give some appropriate lead time. And the second question I have is, is with respect to what are some of the defined outcomes that we're hoping for? Obviously, lessons learned, but, you know, we had talked about using this process, however it unfolds, to help, certainly to help assess how we got to where we did, but also to look at informing our position or the development of a position we may take as a council on OMB reform. And so I'm just interested in those two things, timing as well as, as, you know, identified outcomes.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know on the, that also was an item on the outstanding list, and it is listed as May or June. So, but I'd like to, if you don't mind, redirect the question to Commissioner Nohammer, because he has been involved in that process.
Okay, Mr. Nohammer.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Moore, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we intend to retain the services of Glenn Poltey as a facilitator for that session. He looks like he is available in mid-June to conduct that session. We will finalize a date. And as part of this session, he will be undertaking some interviews with various stakeholders before the session, including members of council, members of staff, members of the GPA, just to get a broader sense of perspective. And our discussions with Glenn to date have been very positive in the terms, in the sense that he has a good understanding of what the outcome should be of the meeting, not only to facilitate a discussion and a respectful dialogue of the various issues by phase of the application, leading right up to the OMB decision, but also to come to a consensus as to what the next steps or what to do with the information. And that will be determined as a group and through consensus. So I got a very good sense from Glenn that he's very experienced in that regard, and he will lead a very respectful discussion and dialogue on the whole process with the outcome and as a group determine what the next step should be.
So at this point, though, it's, I'd like to be able to share this, at least with members of the GPA, to advise them that this is, this is coming and, and that there will be an opportunity directly for, for members of the executive to provide input.
If I may, there's one other item that we should give some thought to, and that is feedback on OMB reform and what the timelines are for inputs relative to that. I was under the impression that might be the end of, that might be the end of May. And I don't know whether or not our planning staff are putting together a position paper. I know that we'll be looking for some information from the region as well. And I think the sooner we have that, so that we could individually, if we wish, to provide some additional input into that process as well. So do we know where that would be at, Mr. Nohammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff are bringing forward that comprehensive review of the four provincial documents on the May 25 meeting of Committee of the Whole. You're quite right, it does only leave a very short time between when comments have to go back to the province. But such is the way that this process has panned out in terms of the short timeframe that stakeholders have been given. The region is also going to be reporting through regional council on the same matter. And so, within a very short timeframe, the region and Newmarket Council will have the benefit of staff reports reviewing those documents.
And that's relative to the three, the, I'm sorry, Christina, I didn't want to take the conversation away from you. That's with Places to Grow, the Oakridges Marine and the Green Belt Act.
Green Belt, yeah.
Okay. But is there not a separate evaluation of the effectiveness of the Ontario Municipal Board? I've kind of lost track of that. You know, I'm just wondering, just, not now, but if we could just zip around an email to let us know what the timelines are those, so that if there's some prep time that's needed. I know that there are a number of people that want to provide input for the OMB reform component.
Certainly, I can follow up with that, Mr. Mayor.
If you would, I appreciate that. Christina, was that all?
Thank you.
That's all right. Okay, Councilor Kirwin?
Yeah, just to, our clerk, we have a scheduled meeting for July the 20th. Is that a confirmed meeting or is it tentative, or do we need to have it there? Normally, we break for July and August, but I see that there's a tentative meeting in, in July, and I would like to know whether that's, that meeting's going to go ahead or it isn't going to go ahead.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Yes, it does note currently on the July 20th that it is if required and also a council meeting presumably to ratify any items from that. Traditionally, what's happened is the, the July meeting is held there if there are any urgent matters. And it's difficult at this point to determine whether or not we would have that. It's relative to the, say, for example, if we receive planning applications or if there's something of an urgent nature. But that being said, I can take the comment back to the senior leadership team and see if there's any further feedback that we could give in terms of being able to confirm the date earlier.
Yeah, I, I would really like that. And, and I don't mind if you say, okay, bang, there's the date, we're having a meeting, that's what we're going to discuss like we do. But to throw in a tentative date when normally we get a break in July, if it's pushed to August, does that really make a great difference? But, you know, we break at the end of June, and I would like to see myself a break there that I know there isn't a meeting or there is one. If there is one, then I can plan accordingly. I can shift what I'm trying to do to another month. So I'd like to know that it's confirmed and we're going to go ahead with it, but not just a tentative. I got caught back in February where an extra meeting was, was slotted in that I didn't know about, and I'd already booked a holiday.
Okay. While we're on that, if we could avoid July, because I have some plans that I cannot alter.
Absolutely. Yeah, that's, you know, we should know or we should not know. Okay. Just another item, it's to Mr. Nohammer again. The, the downtown parking lot has not been swept. In fact, against the northern curb with a butts, the Newmarket Community Tennis Club, it's going to have to be done by, by hand. It's the accumulation of sand and cigarette butts and debris for probably 10 years. It has never been done. And I would hope that it can be done. I've asked for it over the last years, but I don't seem to, they did a great job at the library, but they had to do it by hand because of the accumulation in the corners and along the curb. But when a wind comes up from the south, it blows the sand all over the tennis courts. And I'd just like to see it eliminated, particularly with my sensitive eyes, now that I'm back playing tennis. The other one is the curling club. Once again, the southern boundary of the curling club where the curb is, there's accumulation of sand that's been accumulating for years. And again, it will have to be shoveled out by, by hand. A sweeper couldn't do it, it's compact so badly. And that lot hasn't been done yet either. So anything that could be done to help the elimination of dust and sand throughout the town would be appreciated by the residents. And I know you've done a great job. I know you're two weeks ahead, and I compliment you. I believe every ward has been swept, and I think you've just done an admirable job. It's just these idiosyncrasies where our sweeper can't get in. And you're going to have to maybe close down part of that northern downtown parking lot to get in and do a thorough job. But it does affect the, the quality of, particularly when you have junior lessons and you've got a lot of sand and dust blowing around. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Nohammer?
Yeah, I just wanted to, through you, Mr. Mayor, thank Councilor Kirwin for his comments and to recognize staff on the accomplishment of completing the town sweeping this spring. We did put a push on to get it done as quickly as possible, given the amount of winter debris is out, that was out there. So had a separate contractor come in, as well as our town sweeper, to try to get it done within a three-week concentrated period. And, and so I just wanted to recognize staff in Public Works that, that did that. And to your point, Councilor Kirwin, we will look at those two locations.
It will require actually hand labor, particular labor to do the next step. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. There's no need for a closed session this evening. And the next order of business then is a public hearing that we have with respect to the zoning bylaw amendment at 17844 Leslie Street. And that public hearing will be at 7:00 PM this evening, so I'll take a motion to recess until 7:00 PM this evening. Councilor Twinni, Councilor Vague, all those in favor? That is carried. Thank you.[1464.07] Thank you. All right, we'll get everybody to push their button, so I can see how they'll push their button when they want to speak. Okay, are we good for time? I'll call this evening's session for the committee to hold to order. Madam Clerk, you could read the instructions.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this committee of the whole meeting. The Planning Act requires the town to hold at least one public meeting on any proposed zoning bylaw amendment. The purpose of this public meeting is to hear from anyone who has an interest in the application for a zoning bylaw amendment for the lands located at the southwest corner of Leslie Street and Jeanette Street, municipally known as 17844 Leslie Street, to permit a gas station with four pumps and associated convenience takeout restaurant store. The committee of the whole will not be making a decision regarding the proposed application tonight, but will refer all written and verbal comments to planning staff to consider in a report that will be brought forward to a future committee of the whole or council meeting. If you wish to be notified of subsequent meetings, or if you are making a presentation today, please complete a form with your name and address and submit it to Clerk staff. Please note that in accordance with the Planning Act, the Ontario Municipal Board may dismiss an appeal without holding a hearing if the appellant failed to make either oral submissions at the public meeting or provide written submissions to council prior to adoption. We thank you for your participation and interest in this meeting.
Thank you very much. We'll start the evening off with a presentation from the proponents. We permit up to 10 minutes, so who's here on behalf of the proponent to make a presentation? And then shortly after that, we'll have questions from... We'll receive deputations from members of the audience and any questions following that. But first, let's hear an overview of the proposal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Murray Evans.
Mind if I sit down?
Please do sit down. We'll pick you up a little better on the microphone.
Great, thank you.
My name is Murray Evans. I'm a planning consultant here on behalf of the owner applicant. As you are probably aware, the application before you tonight is to rezone the property before you on the overhead screen or your monitors to allow for a gas bar, which would include, as you just heard, four pumps or four filling stations and a 1,500... roughly about a 1,500... sorry, 150 square meters or about 1,600, 1,700 square foot kiosk. Within that would be your, obviously, your cash for the service products and also ancillary sundry materials would be for sale, such as you'd normally find in any kiosk. And our client is also asking that a small counter be included within that building, which would, right now, looking at, would be food products. There would be no cooking or preparation on site. It would just... It would just be prepackaged materials that, for example, one of the discussion matters is a Subway. So the only thing that would be going on is that the buns would be warmed up and everything else would be brought in. So there would be no food preparation on site. And as such, the issue of perhaps that component of it, of odors and venting, would not... I would offer to you would not be an issue, as it would just be, I'll say, onsite assembly or of Subway sandwiches. As you are probably aware, if I can move this through, this is a site, and I'll say unfortunately, it's pretty much reflective of what's on the site today. There is a public garage. There are two garage doors which are open to Leslie Street. And as you can see, there are many vehicles parked on the site most times. And what we believe is that through the rezoning of the property and the subsequent site plan control application, I would hope that council and committee would see that what we're proposing would be an improvement or a cleaning up of the site. I'll walk through the site plan in a moment. As you can see, this is a picture of the site itself. It's an overhead shot. And the pictures to the side are hopefully there to provide you with somewhat of a context of the property. The photo at the north end is looking almost due south, but slightly southeast. And what you can see, committee members, is that there is a, I'll say, a row of trees at the west limit of the property. There's a little bit of a dip or a ditch. And then there's vegetation on the first single-family home to the west. It's our intention to keep area... All of those... Certainly, we can't touch the vegetation on our neighbor's property, but it's our intention right now, and the site's been designed, to allow those trees to be retained. So we believe that would provide a good head start to providing a buffer to that residential property to the west. And that is obviously a part, as I'll explain shortly, we've designed our site with that being the fundamental element, is trying to provide as much protection because we, you know, probably and rightly can assume that that would be one of the most interested property holders in here, is a person who lives beside it. The other shots are contextual, that show you the parking, where the parking is. And one can see on the bottom shop, the garage doors to the right-hand side of the building. As far... As you may have seen in your staff report, that was before the committee several weeks ago to, as a precondition to this public meeting. The property is designated commercial. And in this particular... In your official plan, in this particular case, the uses which are permitted do include the type of use that you're... That is before you tonight and is anticipated to be in locations like this. I'm sure the committee is very familiar with this general area of Young Street, and there's many commercial operations, plazas, freestyle commercial uses. In fact, immediately to the... Can I go backwards? Yes. Immediately to the south is a small plaza that has two restaurants, a fish and chips shop, a Chinese food restaurant, and a convenience retail. A lot of the storage and the waste receptacles are located on the west side of the building. So this type of freestanding building is not unusual in this location. So once again, the use that we're seeking is permitted in your official plan. The zoning right now permits a range of uses, and I would offer to the committee, many of which would generate far more activity level... Or higher activity level than what we're seeking or comparable, such as restaurants with drive-throughs. As you can see, the motor vehicle repair facility, which is on the site now, is a permitted use. And in just a summary, that in order to allow the service station, which I understand through our environmental site assessment, was previously used as a service station many years ago, we're trying to return that use to the site. This is the site plan, and if I can maybe go to the next one. This is the color landscape plan. And the purpose of the design, or I guess one of the key elements of the design, was we were trying to keep the activities away from the residential property to the west of us. So what we have in that, I'll say that, I hate using that word, cellphone interface, is that there's a six-meter landscaping strip. We propose to retain the vegetation. There is no activities back there. There's no lights, there's no garbage, there's no walkways. The intent of that is there's no reason to go there. There's no reason to establish lighting, other than for safety reasons if staff are so desirous through the site plan process. We are trying to keep the activity on the Young Street side of the site, and the building would serve as somewhat of a buffer or a block to that type of activity. As you can see, even the parking lot is set back another four to six meters away from the property line in excess of the setback to the building. We hope that the site plan here depicts what I would hope to be more green and a better or more attractive streetscape than what is presently on the site. I think I'd be lying to you if I said this is going to be wonderful. It's a service station. People come in, there's cars, there's asphalt, there's gas pumps. But we believe that this is certainly going to be a tidier, neater operation. We're trying to address the street corner by putting planting. We have a... Around the perimeter of the Jeanette Street and Leslie Street corner, we're having masonry pillars linked with wrought iron fencing and some landscaping right at the site triangle. So hopefully, that will present a far superior appearance than that. I certainly don't want to toot our horn, my client purchased this last year. So obviously, this use has been ongoing well before my client acquired the property. So we hope that through this process, we can achieve a better-looking site that will hopefully serve my client's needs, but also improve the look and operation of this site. I'm aware of some of the comments that have been raised by residents in the area. I do a fair amount of service station work, so I hear them. Some of them are legitimate concerns, or some of them tend to be, I guess, perceptions. Some of them are legitimate concerns, or some of them tend to be, I guess, perceptions. For example, gas leaks. What is happening, and we all are, we're all aware of the old sites that were built in thirties, forties, and fifties, with metal containers. These are fiberglass tanks. They're double-walled, in case the first wall breaks. They have monitors hidden, or located, is a better word, inside the tanks to recognize changes in pressure and volume. So if there are any leaks, then it's recognized relatively quickly, so preventative actions can be taken. The world, the technology has changed dramatically over the last fifteen years in this business, and the opportunities and occasions wherein accidents happen is far less. As far as spillage from the loading of it, and odors, odors is typically a big concern when tanker trucks come in and load. What happens is, there's a coupling to the tanks, which you see at the south line. They're plugged in, they're tightened up, and a vacuum system is then initiated or operated. There's a vacuum on the, typically on these trucks, where the, any vapors that may emanate are basically sucked back into the tanker truck. So these things are taken care of. I know there were some issues from the residents about lighting, garbage. We hope that when we go through the site plan process, we recognize that we certainly don't want to cast lighting on our neighbors. That's why we've created the activity area way. So unless there's a need from a security perspective to put a wall lamp on the back of the building, there's no need to put lighting there. Garbage is to be stored internally and rolled out whenever the contractor is on site, so we don't have that type of issue. I would, and I noticed in a few of the comments, the valuation of property. I'm not an expert in that, so I can't speak to it. My only thought is, this seems to be a more attractive use from a compatibility perspective than what's on the site at this very point in time. So we believe it's an appropriate land use. The idea here, and the reason my client has picked this property up, is that it is on Leslie Street, sorry, I may have mentioned Young Street earlier, Leslie Street, and that there's volumes that will eventually make their way to the 404, or to the employment areas. We believe the majority of traffic will be, the usage of this site will be siphoned off of Leslie Street, to a lesser degree from the internal subdivision area. As you may know, there's several streets that lead internal, so we don't believe that there will be any noticeable or significant infiltration created by this, than compared to what the existing scenario is. And as far as safety, the region of New York has looked at this. We've run their design buy-ups. They haven't commented, but we had many meetings with them prior to filing the application, and the design is based on their comments. So we believe from a safety perspective, it will pass the test. Mr. Mayor, I'll leave it at that, and maybe the best thing is if I have an opportunity to respond to any comments, or the committee's questions.
Okay. Maybe what we could do then is ask you to have a chair then, and if there's any questions from the audience.
Thank you very much.
We'll ask the deputies to come forward, and we'll take notes, and if there's some questions that can be answered after, we could do that, or we could direct staff to follow up and provide any answers to questions that are raised. Is there anyone here that wishes to make a deputation? I do know that we have ten letters that we've received as well, that are on file, and that will be part of the record. Is there anyone here that wishes to express a concern, or make some recommendations, or any comments with respect to this proposal?
Yes, I would.
Okay. If you could come down and have a chair.
My name's Tim Whitfield, 1041 Genet, and I've probably lived around there about forty-nine years.
Tim, this is being streamed, so, this is being streamed, this is a public meeting. So if you could have a chair, so that the people who are watching the, no, no, a chair by the desk here, Tim.
Oh.
Okay.
I do want to get on.
But you can have a chair there. This is so that we can record what's being said, and people who are watching.
I have, do I have to identify myself?
If you could do that again.
Okay, Tim Whitfield, 1041 Genet Street, Newmarket. Yeah, I've lived there a long time, like I said, longer than anyone else, I think. I've seen a gas station come and go. I've been going in there since I was a high school student. And they had a leak there years ago, and one, I'm, it's downhill, you know, the gas station will be above where I live, and a guy took water out of a well and lit it on the driveway. The wells are no longer in use. But, you know, it got our interest, and we went to town water many, many years ago, so we're good with that. But gas stations have some risk. I know they're a lot better now than they used to be. The other thing I'm concerned about is twenty-four-seven lighting. I mean, you know, we see some of that, and that's pretty ugly stuff. The other thing is, my concern, why do we need a gas station? There's a quarter of the number of gas stations in Newmarket that there used to be, so why are we increasing them? Also, I would say there's an element of risk. People go fast along Leslie, and you're going to have traffic pulling in and out. It's between two lights. It's, there's enough skidding and horns blowing, I can hear it now. I don't think this will contribute anything to road safety. I think I've said enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Please come forward.
Hi there, my name is Anthony Benedict, resident of Newmarket, Genet Street 1019. My family is over there as well. We do have a few concerns, actually, and I want to pick up from where I believe Tim left off, some very good comments, Tim. What I want to focus on really is three specific points. So typically, when you have the injection between commercial and residential, there are three criteria that really come into play. You've got to make sure the environment's still harmonious, to where it was currently today. Need to make sure that there is no impact to our environment with regards to contamination. And we also need to make sure that it's not impacting to our residents. So if I was to cover all those three areas, when you look from a harmonious perspective, if we were to focus on the immediate demographic of our three neighboring streets, Jeanette, Elgin, Jacaranda, you'll notice that our residential demographic is really focused on two areas: retired community, as well as a lot of young families coming into the environment as well. Why do they come there? Because they come there for the serene nature, for the tranquility of those streets that it actually offers. So I do agree that, from an aesthetics perspective, the proposed plan is obviously far nicer, and far, obviously, far more pleasing to the eyes in comparison to what currently exists. But I believe the concern really here is not improvement of our city, which we all for, it's the nature of the business that's been brought forward there. So with regards to harmonious aspect, I'm really concerned about the fact that the increased traffic in the environment is really going to cause a lot of concern for our neighborhood. As you can see, the proposed solution has an opening onto Jeanette Street, which by all means will impact the number of cars and vehicles traveling down Jeanette, looking to circumvent entrance back into Leslie. With regards to hours of operation, a typical gas station operates way outside of your typical residential parameters. So you're going to have a gas station open until late hours, which is going to, of course, induce a lot more traffic, a lot more activity in the environment. And that basically is going to be non-harmonious to the environment as well, to our immediate dwellings. Secondly, if you look at the amount of gas stations we actually have in Newmarket, we have thirteen gas stations approximately, with a deviation of about maybe eight percent, one or two additional, which I haven't had a chance to do from Google Map. Out of the thirteen gas stations in Newmarket, we have four in the primary thoroughfare on Leslie Street. Those four gas stations are within a one-kilometer radius to Jeanette Street. Give or take a little arrow there. So if you look at, and again, I look at the point that was mentioned prior, talking about servicing the traffic going through Leslie. But if you look at Leslie, just north of Jeanette, and just south of Jeanette, you'll see that there are two gas stations just north of Jeanette, at the main artery into 404 at Green Lane, and two gas stations up south of Jeanette, by David's Drive, into 404 again. So my question here is, how are we generating new revenue? How are we pulling new customers into this gas station, when you're surrounded by four gas stations on both sides, supported by three primary fuel manufacturers? You've got Esso, Shell, and Petrocan. And thirdly, we're concerned about the hazardous environment, the hazardous conditions as well, as mentioned. I mean, by all means, I do agree that the technology has come a long way, and I do agree that we've taken far more precautionary measures pertaining to SPO, or Canadians' the Environment Protection Act. I agree with that. But all that does is limit risk. It does not eliminate risk. It brings risk down to a residual aspect, which is acceptable. End of the day, we all have wells on our street, with our artisan wells. Some of us still use them for watering our plants and stuff like that. We also know that there was also potential leakage. You never have a tank that's perfectly sealed, so there could be some leakage, which could eventually impact our artisan wells. So that's one of our concerns as well.
Okay. I have you at five minutes now.
Thank you.
If I can have you wrap up?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward? Yes, sir. If you wish your address. We'll get the gentleman up back there next.
Ian Brown, 990, Jeanette. And I guess most of what has been said, I would agree with. The only thought that were referenced to the entrance off of Jeanette, and the opinion of the man that spoke about the site plan, being that it would not impact the neighborhood, I would disagree. And it is just my opinion, as it was his, that it would not impact. I would suggest that, like my neighbors had said, that it likely will, you know, people will try and circumvent going back out onto Leslie. And if there was anything that we might do that would alter that plan, is maybe to close that entrance onto Jeanette, because I know what's going to happen, I know it's a good, it's a done deal. But, and I also ask why? Why another gas station? You know, we certainly don't need one. It would be my opinion in that respect also. And otherwise, on the lighting, I know that in Muskoka, they made it bylaws for new construction to have downlighting, which I guess is, you know, a nice option, if we look at that, too. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mike Squires. I live at 1042 Jeanette. I've lived there for forty years, and all of that time, we have believed there has been a right-of-way to the west of the gas station, between the gas station and the first residence down Jeanette Street. On talking to neighbors and people that have been around, it appears before this area was annexed from East Willimbury, there was to be a water tower situated to the north of Jeanette. And from that water tower, it appears there was a right-of-way going all the way through to Elgin. And what I believe with this development is that convenience store is encroaching upon the Town of Newmarket property. I believe when that area was annexed from East Willimbury, that automatically became Town of Newmarket property as a right-of-way. I don't know for sure, but that's my thoughts. And when you talk to people who have been in the area, it's always been understood to be a right-of-way. It did not belong to the garage as such.
Okay. I think what will happen, if not already done, there would need to be a survey. Mr. Ruggel?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Mr. Squires and I have spoken in the past, and we've begun some research on land ownership in that area. The work isn't finalized yet, but we'll have a fulsome discussion in the follow-up report.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that to our attention then.
By the way, I agree that the site will be improved by this development. It will look a lot neater than what it's done for the many, many years. So.
Thank you. Any other questions from members within the audience? Okay, I'll, questions in from our members of council, and Councilor Twinni?
Should we have some, a motion to receive the court, right now, or do you want?
Sure, we could receive all the deputations, as well as the correspondence. So for the record, we'll receive all the deputations, the presentation. There are ten letters, one from Lisa Barrett, Lucia Benedict, Kay Chan, Mike Squires, and also from Leanne Crowley, Kevin Clare, Ruth Rutledge, and Ms. Gina Magnifico, and Harold and Ann Schmidt, and Jane Cordless. Those are the, that's the correspondence that's been circulated as well. So the motion then would be to receive the presentation, the deputations.
And the correspondence.
And the correspondence. Okay, is there a second for that? Regional councillor. Okay, all those in favor? And that is carried. Okay, some clarification questions then? Did you?
Well, some questions for you, Mr. Mayor, to staff, to Mr. Ruggel.
Sure.
So we know that there was a gas station there in the past, and as it stands now, what's the steps for with regards to environmental, the phase one and phase two environmental studies that have to be done? Would there, you know, would there have to be the two done with regards to any tanks that would have to be removed, or any remedial work done on the site prior to any new installation of any gas tanks?
Mr. Ruggel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. A phase one environmental site assessment has been submitted and peer-reviewed, excuse me, with the application. And as you could expect, it recommended a phase two be done. The phase one is the more historical look at uses and the probability of contamination. And the phase two is the actual soil samples to determine if contamination is there, and the extent of it, as well as what needs to be done to remedy the situation. So we will require a phase two. A zoning bylaw can be passed with a holding provision that wouldn't be removed until such time as the Director of Engineering Services is satisfied that the environmental work is completed.
Okay. And through you, Mr. Mayor, I guess, I mean, some of the comments, and just a variety, some of the comments from some of the residents regarding, I guess, and this is obviously, this would come through on site plan, just to, for your, just to confirm, I guess, to the residents regarding lighting, downlighting, hours of operation, things of those nature would come through on site, once it gets to a site plan process, right?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. Those details would be sorted through that site plan process.
Okay. As with like heights of retaining walls, things of that nature as well, right? Any of those issues?
That's correct. Heights of retaining walls. The heights of the buildings and structures could be identified through the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Counselor Sponga?
Just a question, there is an, if I recall correctly, it was there last week, there is an interest, and I'm looking for it, but I can't seem to see it. Is there an interest presently on Jeanette Street? Jeanette Street, I'm sorry, to the proponent?
Mr. Ruggel, is it?
Through the chair, yes, there's an access on Jeanette, in, with those Jeanette ones block cars.
So is it, and I'll get to that in a second. Is the Jeanette, when you're proposing now, is it the same location, or is?
It seems to be of the same location.
The other question you refer, I was going to ask you whether I had here on my notes, whether the proponent is the present owner or business operator, but you said that your client?
He is not. He acquired the property last year, and he has somewhat, I'd say, income by current lease status, driving the property when he acquired it.
Okay, because I was just wondering, I think the first step in trying to cooperate with the neighbors is to try to get the site cleaned up presently. But, okay, I'll leave that. Thank you.
Okay, regional councillor?
Thanks, sir. Through you to Mr. Ruggel, two questions. One, the lighting, just clarifying, but there's been, there's been several circumstances in town where we've worked with proponents to adjust lighting related to residential areas, et cetera, and often successfully can accommodate or adjust the typical lighting that one might see.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. Our zoning bylaw would suggest that lighting needs to be directed downwards and away from residential properties, but through that site plan process, we can further define those.
The, it was mentioned about the Jeanette Street entrance, it's come up a couple of times, and I can definitely see where there'd be concern around that from the residents. times, and I can definitely see where there'd be concern around that from the residents. At the same time, I can also see how the flow of that, that station, if this were to be approved, and I want to emphasize if, but if it were to be approved, I can see how that flow would be tricky with only one entrance. But I'm wondering, is it conceivable or, again, are circumstances in the past where, where we could potentially have a, a write-out only?
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's something we could certainly look at.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that's true. Starbucks location is one example. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Spungat.
Actually, I had similar thoughts along the same line as Counselor Taylor. And one of the questions I was going to ask, but now I've been able to go on street view here, whether there was an opportunity to connect the presence, the, the site in question to the, to the plaza that has a variety store and a couple of restaurants directly to the south. Hence, potentially having a right in and right out, two exits, just on Leslie Street. But there is a grade differential, substantial grade differential. Can it be addressed at all or?
Go ahead. Maybe if you come forward, we can.
Through the chair, I would doubt that very much. That's great.
Difference. It has to be a meter and a half to two meters and it's a very short drop. So I doubt very much that that would be able to be achieved.
And would the site give you an opportunity? I've seen, I've seen other gas stations that don't necessarily have a driveway that is the width of, you know, your regular access point to, I'll give you an example, this is Leslie Street, this is down Highway 11 going up to Muskoka, but where the whole front part is a rolling curb. Is that something that the region would approve? Because then that would take away the need potentially for the entrance on Jeanette To you, Mr. Ruggel, or to the proponent?
Mr. Ruggel?
Do you want me to take a crack, Dave?
Sure.
I'll just, may I just offer my slanted view on life? It, we'd certainly be willing to look at that, but my challenge here with the closing Jeanette Street is that there has to be a tanker, the ability to get a tanker truck in. And right now, the movement would be coming from the south, making a left-hand turn into Jeanette Street, pulling through the site, filling the pumps at the south end, pulling out and going south. It would, there's, I can virtually speak with certainty, there's, if Jeanette's, Jeanette Street is closed, there's absolutely no way to maneuver a tanker truck on that site. So that is, it would be, I'll think, I'll say fundamental to the ability of the site to work. Now, can there be controls put on as far as turn restrictions and the like? We'd certainly be willing to work with the region and town staff on something to that.
Let me try to give this, this, a last crack at it. You see the slide that's in front of us now where it says at the top right, a hundred, 1,275 millimeters high brick piers?
Yep.
Okay. And I, I would have to have some clarification, of course, from our planning staff and it's a regional board and understand all of those things. But if the curb was to be a soft rolling curb from that point where that little note is there, it says 1,275 millimeters, down to where you start, you end your driveway on the south end, would the tanker not be able to get in there? No. All right. Thank you.
I guess what we've done is we've highlighted some concerns about the access from Jeanette Street. That, that will involve some dialogue and conversation with the region because I, I think the region also has some jurisdiction to a certain measure off of, off of Leslie Street. So what we can do is we can note the concern and look at possible solutions in terms of how that can be, how that can be addressed. Mr. Ruggel?
That's right, through you, Mr. Mayor. We'll liaise with the region of New York Transportation as well as the applicant and see what options are available for access to the grass.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any other questions? One of the, the points that has been raised in, in terms of, you know, why do we need a gas station? The unfortunate reality that the municipality has is that this, this proposal comes to us under the Planning Act and the business case and the commercial viability of the proposal probably is not a consideration in terms of, of whether or not the municipality can or cannot approve this, that, that's an independent assessment that the property owners will need to make. So, so it's, it's something that is not likely going to be able to be addressed through the planning process, but the merits of the planning application and the, the items that have been raised, particularly with respect to interface compatibility and the property lines in the survey, those are things that will fall within the mandate of, of this council. And maybe before we wrap up then, Mr. Ruggel, if you could explain what the next steps would be, what the likely timeline of that would be and what the options are with respect to the residents, if they want to, A, follow through the process and if they want to have input to any subsequent steps and what their options are there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there remains a number of outstanding technical issues that need to be addressed and we'll also need time to consider the, the comments that we've heard tonight as well as those written comments that have been received. I think the earliest we could report back to Committee of the Whole is, is likely the, the June 15th Committee of the Whole meeting. If folks that are here tonight want to be notified of that meeting, please make sure you signed in at the, the front desk there and we'll make sure you're notified when this issue comes back to Committee of the Whole.
Okay, and so when this comes back to the Committee of the Whole, that's a public meeting in the afternoon. The decisions made at the Committee of the Whole and subsequently come to council, those are both public meetings. And so you have the option to express your views at both of those options. Once the decision is made, there is an option either for the proponent or the municipality or the residents to, if they disagree with the decisions that are being made, to file an application for consideration at the Ontario Municipal Board. So there's still three options that, that give you an opportunity to be, to be heard. And, and in the meantime, what we've found frequently is very helpful is to express your concerns and if you could, if you could have a number of people represent the neighborhood group, get together with our planning department and with the proponent and see if there's ways that you can find solutions to what your concerns are throughout the process. So that's, there are a number of options there. I would encourage you, if you have some ideas, there's some thoughts, and if you see that in the subsequent reports, those, those concerns aren't addressed, then that could lead to further dialogue with the proponent and, and there may be some solutions there. So I appreciate you coming out. I very much, it's good to see that the neighbors take the time to let people know what the community looks like and that that discussion takes place. So thank you for coming out. I'll adjourn the meeting on the motion to adjourn. Counselor Curran, Counselor Bay, all those in favor? And that is carried. You adjourned.